Now we're good.
Okay, I'd like to call the Planning Commission for the town of McCannell's to order. First item on the agenda is preliminary and final approval of a land development subdivision known as Walnut Court Lot 105 Revised. Property is located at 400, 402, 404, 406, and 408 Walnut Court, Pittsburgh, PA.
One second, I'm finding all the folks that match up with each of the applicants. We've got full house tonight, so give me a second.
You just want to explain this one, RJ? Is there anyone else here that's supposed to go over this for?
Yeah, we've, we've got, we've got the engineer here, just the, I mean, we really do. We have thirty something folks in the participant section, so I'm just hunting for whether or not we have them connected by audio. Well, in the meantime, um, this is, this is a very cut and dry, straightforward subdivision plan. Essentially, this is for the Walnut Court Town Home Plan. Originally, when these were approved, uh, they, they didn't want to, um, cut up the parcels into, I mean, cut up the, the lots into individual parcels for each of the town homes because, you know, sometimes a couple inches, you're off on the exact construction. And so, you know, you don't want to accidentally put the parcel line through the middle of somebody's living room when you're sharing walls. So every time they construct one of these blocks of town home lots, um, they, they will have to come back for this final subdivision. Um, so you're going to see a couple more of these over some time. I believe they had a completely clean engineer's comment letter. Dan, if you have anything to add to that, feel free, but I think this one's pretty straightforward.
Ms. Sussco, did you want to step forward, need to run through the general way we're going to handle all the matters?
Yeah, you know what? I, I did. I'm sorry Ted threw me off. He was ready to go. Um, before, before we continue any further, I just want to introduce to everyone who hasn't met him yet. This is Erv Farman. He is one of the land use experts with our town attorney firm. He's here to, to kind of help us make sure that, you know, public comment, all of that runs routinely. Erv, if you want to take it away?
No, sure. Thank you. I just, you know, just because we have so many items on the agenda and so many people present, I just thought it'd be a good idea to walk through, you know, how we're going to handle the matters and that way everybody can feel comfortable for the evening. Uh, you know, the way I'd suggest is, as you would, Ms. Sussco, you would introduce the plan, uh, give it some general background, turn it over to Mr. Dizeroth as the township engineer for any preliminary comments that he may have, let the applicant come in, you know, present the plan as with any comments that the applicant would like to make, then turn it back over to the planning commission members for any questions or any, anywhere they need to take the meeting. Uh, after that, they, you know, want to open it up to any members of the public. And I think the important thing is, is that even though there's a lot of people here tonight, we'll make sure that everybody from the public has an opportunity to speak on any plan they would want to before there's an actual vote or, or recommendation. So with that, I turn it back over to you.
All right, you know, thank, thank you, Erv. I've been looking through the participant list here, and I am not sure whether I see.
I saw Mr. Shoup there.
I, I believe he's here for the Greystone Plan of Lots.
Yes.
Rich, if that's wrong wave. Okay, no, I, I got it. Um, so.
Walnut, Walnut Court.
Yeah, Walnut Court. I, I don't see their engineer here. Uh, then this is a Don Paul Plan. Again, completely clean letter. I'm, I'm not particularly too concerned that they have anything to add, but you know, if I can find him, I'll put him on camera. All right, if somebody is not clearly identified in their username, um, in the Zoom participants list, feel free to type in the chat and say, hi, I'm here for the Walnut Court one, but it looks like we don't have a rep right now. So.
Yeah, I'll just, RJ, I'll just, I'll just step in and say that, uh, I've reviewed the plan for members of the planning commission. It's really just the subdivision of one of the lots within the plan. They're subdividing into five individual lots to represent the party walls of the town homes. Uh, the plan as it is submitted meets the technical requirements of the ordinance as it is, and, uh, it, it's ready for your consideration.
All right. Are there, are there any comments by planning commission members?
No.
Brendan?
No.
Jonathan?
No.
I don't have any either. Uh, Kim, do you have any comments?
Um, I don't have any comments about the plan. I, I did want to say one thing about Mr., uh, to Mr. Furman in that, um, the protocol that he has outlined is not what the planning commission has traditionally done, and it does not follow our agenda. So, um, I'm a little bit concerned that that might be confusing to maybe some of the public that we're just kind of planning on coming at the end of the meeting instead of sitting through the entire meeting. So those two things don't seem to correspond. I just wanted to make sure that was considered. Because that's the agenda that's been posted.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. Let me clarify. The, the public comment at the end of the meeting would remain as public comment for any items. It's just that, uh, you know, under the sunshine law, we want to be sure that before the planning commission would take any action, that members of the public would have an opportunity to comment on it before they would do so. So you're correct, a hundred percent correct, that the public comment at the end of the meeting would certainly remain, but we're just giving people an, an ability to comment before an action is taken. Sorry.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, you know, the people who would still have an opportunity who perhaps weren't here at the beginning, but were coming later.
Yeah.
Signing up by email ahead of time, I've also made sure to indicate to them that we will specifically be asking for public comment. Um, or I think that that's a procedure that we'll just incorporate in general going forward. It's kind of good housekeeping, but particularly since we do have some members of the public signed up for a specific plan, wanted to make sure I communicated that to them directly.
And council takes its public comment at the beginning of the meeting so that everyone can make all the comments that they need to if they can't stay till eleven o'clock at night or twelve o'clock at night for hours.
Right, right.
Just something to consider. If we're going to change how we do this, then maybe the public comment should be, you know, like, like we do in council. Uh, just an idea, just.
Don't we take public comment after the planning commission has spoken and do it on each item?
That's novel.
That's what we've done before.
Correct. Right. And I, you know, again, I think what you want is you want to be able to hear from the public before, again, you can, you'll, the applicant will present, you'll make your comments and, and get the information you need, but before you actually take a vote, you should hear from the public.
That's what we've done in the past.
Okay, very good.
Okay. Are there, are there any public comments on this plan, RJ?
Uh, I have not received any signups in advance. If anyone is here, um, to make a public comment specifically on this plan that hasn't let me know yet, please type in the chat now, but I, I don't believe that we have anyone signed up.
Well, this seems like a, a pretty cut and dried.
Yes. Yeah.
So is there a motion to recommend approval?
I move to approve.
Is there a second?
A second.
That would be Brendan. All, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Okay, all right. Well, it would be nice if they all went that smoothly, but.
Yeah, I think that's personally the letter I've, I've gotten so far. So gold star to them. Um, I just want to note, since we do have quite a few members of the audience, uh, signed in here, if you are not currently presenting, taking, or involved in the specific item being considered, please just keep your cameras off for now. Um, we do record these videos in gallery view, and so we try to limit who is on camera to the folks that are actually actively participating in what's being discussed. So it's not personal if I'm hitting stop video. It's just kind of a housekeeping item.
Okay. Second item on the agenda is a preliminary and final approval of a land development subdivision plan known as Greystone Plan of Lots Addition. The property is located at 1290 Fastenger Lane, Pittsburgh, PA. So I'll turn it over. You are, Jane.
I, I actually, I do have the person here. Richard Shoup is here for this particular. So while we're getting rich on camera, um, just a little bit of background, this plan originally, the Greystone Plan of Lots, this is one that, that was, um, actually came through the planning commission prior to me being here. However, I believe it's for lots, um, that are situated across the street from what will eventually become that fastener farms plan that we had come through the other month. This is again, a pretty, pretty simple one. Uh, it's a lot line revision for the most lot. There was an access easement, um, for the neighbor's driveway, which I think was a couple feet over the line. And actually, you know, partially located on, on one of the Greystone, um, residential properties. So the, the developer is coming back to do a little lot line revision. So essentially they clear that access easement. It's completely, um, on her property going forward. So that's what we've got this application here for today. Dan, did you have any preliminary comments that you want to call out?
Sure. Uh, this, this plan, as RJ referred to, is really just a lot line revision. Uh, we had a letter dated October 29th, uh, with some technical comments, mostly minor, uh, comments. Uh, the developers engineer, uh, has revised the plans to address all of our comments. So in my opinion, the plan is technically complete and ready for your consideration.
Okay. Comments from the planning commission? Dan?
No.
No.
Brendan?
No.
Jonathan?
Nope.
Kim, any comments on your part?
So we're just moving the lot line over a few feet. Is that what I'm seeing here?
Yes.
Yes, eight, eight feet.
And does this, this, this is the just change for this, but is this, isn't this property, all of this include, did this section include the property that's over to the left of it? This says, this is a fastener lane property, but I don't see how, where the fastener lane address would be.
Let me, let me pull it up. I think that the.
Doesn't look like it even borders fastener lane.
I think that the, the Greystone Lot, either the Greystone Lot Plan was located in that area, or there was something funny about the address I recall. Uh, yeah, yeah, here we go. Um, whatever happened to this plan, you know, once upon a time when it was being developed, some, there were some paper streets and things like that that I don't think ever came to fruition. So the homeowner who had the private access easement and is, you know, located immediately to the north of the Greystone Plan, her address actually is 1290 Fastener Lane, even though she doesn't technically front on Fastener.
Okay.
I know.
I'm sorry. I just thought.
It's a pretty cool question, however.
All right, just trying to understand where Fastener Lane was since it doesn't border it anywhere. Okay. That was my only question.
Are there, are there any, um, any members of the public who want to comment on this, RJ?
Uh, I do not have anyone signed up to comment for this application. Again, if you would like to provide comment, please type in the chat with your name, address, and, uh, matter you would like to speak on.
Okay. Being no other comments, I'd like, uh, a call for a vote on this, uh, project. Is there a, uh, a, a, a motion?
I make a motion to approve and vote.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay.
Dan for number one, and then sorry, who's the second?
Brendan.
Two for Greystone, and that was four zero to recommend. Okay.
Okay, next.
No.
Agenda is preliminary and final approval of a land development subdivision plan known as Walnut Court Lot, whoops, nope, 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 Johnson Wolf Plan of Lots. Property is located at nine two four one Old Perry Highway.
These folks are on here. And again, thanks everyone for bearing with me. We're pushing forty participants in the meeting. It's larger than we've gotten. So I just have to spend a little time finding everyone to keep them up in the.
You're going to have to explain this one, RJ.
Yeah, it's, um, it, it, it looks pretty interesting. I understand. Um, I'm, I'm sent microphone requests, um, to those who are presenting on this. There's video. Hope I got the right Amanda on this one. All right, good. I was banking on Amanda being the correct one. Um, so this is, this is basically a simple subdivision plan, not so simple the way that it actually looks. But essentially, there are two, two lots right now that are located. One fronts on Parkville. Um, the other one fronts on Old Perry Highway, but they do share a border just because the streets are configured in, um, kind of interesting in, in, in that area. Essentially, this started because there is an interest from the property owner in building a mother-in-law suite. Um, you know, more or less, you know, a, a, a single person dwelling. However, um, in our single family home districts, we only permit one dwelling per lot. So, you know, if, if you've got someone, living in an apartment with a kitchen that's not attached to the house, that basically qualifies as a dwelling. Um, I, I believe at some point they were advised, you know, you're going to have to subdivide, um, if, if you want to pursue this. So they worked it out with their neighbor, um, who was offered to sell them some, some land to help put together this parcel that is the newly considered lot three. Um, I'm going to actually see if I can share my screen here. Because this, this plan definitely needs an illustration. Um, but so essentially, they, they've put together this, this plan that's got one new lot nestled in between these two smaller lots originally. As designed right now, the new lot would share a driveway with, uh, ninety-two forty-one Old Perry Highway, which is the applicant's property. Uh, this is permitted under the code. We've advised that they have some sort of access easement recorded with the deed, but there's nothing that precludes a shared driveway. So I, I think that that's, that's kind of, you know, the, the, the main points of, of, of this, um, of this subdivision coming through. A lot of lot lines. Um, again, if you give me just one second, I'll, I'll have this up on the screen here, but, um, as far as we can tell, you know, it got the one variance for the forty-five foot lot line, um, that the proposed lot that fronts on Parkville would be less than sixty-five feet, which is the lot line length that you have to have when it's abutting any street, even if that's not the street you take your access from. Um, they did receive a variance from the zoning hearing board to have a forty-five foot lot line. Didn't really change the character of the neighborhood. The lot was already shaped kind of oddly. And, you know, as far as I can tell, other than that, the plan is compliant on the zoning front. Uh, Dan, do you have anything to add?
Sure. Thanks, RJ. Uh, members of the planning commission, I prepared a letter dated October thirtieth, uh, and I had, uh, a number of comments. Uh, most of the minor related to the comments to the plan. Since they, they will be sharing the same driveway, one of my concerns was, uh, making sure that they had reciprocal, uh, easements to be able to cross, uh, from proposed lot three, uh, to, uh, existing, the existing, or existing lot where the existing dwelling is on lot two. So they've added some notes to the plan. I've received a revised plan, and they've, uh, added some notes to the plan to include the reciprocal driveway and utility easements crossing each other there. So that was my primary concern, just to make sure that they would have, uh, those issues addressed. And, um, they have, uh, addressed all of my other comments, uh, the graphical items that needed to be added to the plan. I would add to the, uh, and we'll talk to their surveyor. Uh, since they did receive a variance, typically we put the date and the decision of this variance on the plan also. Uh, we'll get that added to the plan, but, but otherwise it's, uh, it's ready to go. Uh, the, they have added a note also because, uh, once they subdivide, there is a carport in a play structure that exists on the property. So they've added a note that they will obtain a building permit within a year or have to raise those. They've indicated they're going to raise those anyway. So i- it is a simple plan, uh, just, just, uh, making sure that, uh, they don't, uh, tie their hands up because this property, although they're, they know each other now in the future, we want to make sure that, uh, with the, the shared driveway that, uh, they'll, they'll all be, uh, covered in the future. That's all my comments.
Okay. You have anything else, RJ?
Camera on right now, as well as their architect, I believe, if they have anything to add.
We didn't hear the beginning of what RJ said.
Yeah, we didn't, we couldn't hear you, RJ.
Oh, okay. Um, what, what part you mean just now or when I was explaining?
You're too far away. We can't.
Yeah, I think you're too far away from your speaker. That's right.
Okay, can you hear me better now?
Yeah, that's better.
Sorry, we're, I'm working on the fly here. My work laptop's camera, as of yesterday, decided that it doesn't turn on anymore. So I've got my personal laptop here and my laptop over here running the meeting. Um, I, I just mentioned that, uh, Amanda Wolf and Michael Johnson, um, the applicants are also here, and, um, their architect, uh, Matthew Schlup is also here. So if they had anything to add, um, I believe they should be unmuted and on camera now.
All right.
Uh, we don't have anything to add right now.
I don't have anything to add either.
Okay. Are there any comments from planning commission members?
This is Dan, just for point of clarification. We're creating this new lot to build a new single, uh, not single story, but single family freestanding home. Is that the intention here?
Yeah, garage with an in-law suite, correct.
Okay.
And, you know, of course, this would be assessed separately someday. It would presumably become a, you know, a tiny, single family home. Um, hence the access easement.
Okay.
Is that it, Dan?
Yeah, that's it. Sorry.
Okay, Brendan? I can't see anyone, so I can't tell whether you're nodding or whatever.
Here, let's, let's get out of this.
Okay, Brendan, you have any comments?
Nothing.
Jonathan?
No, I think since the, the, they already obtained the variance, I don't have anything else to add.
I just had a couple of quick comments. Uh, number one, we talked, I, I did talk to RJ about this earlier in the week, and, um, there is an underlying plan of lots. Does anything have to be done with a lot lines and so forth for the old plan of lots in order for this to proceed properly? Maybe I should be addressing that to Erv. I'm not sure.
Well, I think, I think Dan would have reviewed it, but I'll, I'll defer to Dan first unless he needs something from.
All right.
Yeah, I, I think that, um, those older lots, typically the way they show them, uh, with in a grade light line, uh, gives the indication of the old plan. The county use usually likes to see those lines on there. But, uh, considering that these lots are already subdivided and, and taxed as, uh, full entities and full parcels, uh, you know, it's not absolutely necessary to have them on there. I believe, I believe that it's really a county call on what they want to see on the plan. And, uh, RJ and I had some correspondence with the surveyor earlier that he's checking with the county to see Ted if, uh, they want those to stay on the plan.
All right, but they don't have to be somehow extinguished legally?
Uh, technically, they could be, they, if you show them the way they're showing them right now, I assume they were being extinguished.
Okay.
That's, that's the way it is. So if we leave them on there that way, that's, that's what that means.
Okay. My second question is just a, I don't know what it is, but we have this, this small slot of property going from the house in the back down to Old Perry Highway. Uh, it looks like the people access Park Avenue for, for their, their access, but does this give them any right to put another driveway or anything like that in?
The, the, um, the lot that takes its entryway from Parkville? Or do you mean?
Well, you, you have, I don't even know exactly what. It, it's such an odd looking lot.
Sure.
That I, I would, I just wanted to see if there was any, any problems that were going to occur with, uh, leaving that, how big is it? That forty-five foot wide strip along Old Perry Highway.
Right now, the way that, um, I think you all can see my, my mouse here. Um, right now, this is the existing lot line for lot one. So, you know, thi- this right here, this is a really steep slope. Um, which is another reason that, that going forward with this plan, they would be looking at a shared driveway because there's really not anywhere you could grade up. This one is going at a diagonal, diagonal, just because, you know, again, it helps with the slope. Um, it, it would seem that, that this individual has not done anything particular with this portion of their lot. You know, again, it's, it's pretty slim already. Um, and they did specifically give their consent to ask for the variance. So I, I don't, I don't see any likelihood of a driveway being established on this section of the lot.
I guess my, my main concern is that I just, I just don't like to create pieces of property that are this odd. And I know the, the, uh, the owners probably feel it's fine. And I guess I'd like to get some of the, some reaction from the planning commission members also on, on that. Are you?
I, I don't, I, I see what you're saying, Ted. I mean, it's obviously this, this panhandle kind of, uh, structure, if you will, that stretches down toward Old Perry Highway, which won't be good for much, frankly.
No.
And, uh, but I, I don't have any significant quarrel with it.
Well, I guess my concern is, you know, is anybody going to maintain it?
It's being maintained by myself, and if you see on there, the Holtz's, um, the woman in lot one doesn't really use it at all. She allows the Holtz's to sort of cut it, mow it, I mow it. It's, uh, she never really kind of goes there.
If, uh, honestly, the, the, it's abutted against on Old Perry Highway, a wood line, and the lot three, what the parcel that we want to purchase to create lot three is all wood line.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of all woods. So it's really not, couldn't, unless you cleared everything, you really couldn't use it for much.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, Ted, on the driveway side, it's twenty-two foot of elevation change. So, um, the, even if they use the full hundred feet, they, they would never, uh, meet town standard for a driveway grade. So we wouldn't permit, we wouldn't permit it.
Okay, I'll also add too that that drive would arrive at the intersection at an odd, uh, angle. So I think even the intersection approach would probably be, uh, not approved as well, I would assume. It's just as far as a danger.
Okay. Kim, do you have any comments?
I'm, I'm glad you changed the, put the proper name up there instead of Park Avenue for Parkville. That was good. I was. Cause all of our plans are, all of our plans are.
Back when it was the Melrose Plan that never quite developed the way that it was planned out in, was it nineteen twenty-seven?
Wow.
Right, yeah, that was, that was the, the vintage plan that I sent you. Yeah, and, and for sort of the benefit of the group, looking at the screen share right now, the official recorded plan submitted does still have that Melrose Plan of Lots, which were all very narrow, you know, like a fifty, fifty-five foot, um, going through this whole neighborhood. Now, of course, it didn't end up developing that way. But I, we're, we're waiting essentially to hear back from the county as to whether they prefer the final recorded plan to also include all those little underlying lot lines, which are very confusing visually, um, or if we can record it as you see it here.
Okay. Any other comments? Any comments by the, uh, the public on this one?
I did not have anyone signed up in the chat, and I did not receive anyone signing up ahead of time.
Okay, can you get us back then to our grid with everybody on it? There we go.
I can.
Okay, I'd like, uh, then is there a motion to, uh, recommend approval? Okay, I'd like, uh, then is there a motion to, uh, recommend approval?
I'll recommend, I'll make a motion to recommend approval.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay.
Jonathan on the second?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Well, we're moving right along, aren't we?
We are, and thank you very much, uh, Matt and Amanda. Feel free to get in touch with me and we can talk about scheduling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just get my, keep my, uh, plans in order here. Okay.
Sorry, go ahead, Ted.
I was just going to say the next item on the agenda is a preliminary and final approval of a land development site plan application known as Preserve at Pine Creek. Properties located forty-five Pine Creek Road.
Okay, um, and I, I think we've got mostly, I don't think we had any new attendees join, but just in case, um, while I'm finding the folks, uh, that are here to present this plan and putting them on screen. Irv, if you could just real quick again, outline the public comment procedures, since I do have a handful of people signed up for this one.
Sure, you know, we're going to start off with, you know, Ms. Sescel will give a brief introduction of the plan. Uh, then we'll turn it over to Dan Dazeroth from Gateway Engineers for preliminary comments, uh, regarding the plan. At that point, we'll turn it over to the applicant to present any information that they would like to present. Then we'll turn it over to planning commission members to, in any direction, uh, they'd like to keep reading and ask any questions they would need to do. So then, uh, we will turn it over to members of the public. And again, anyone who wants to speak on this plan will have the opportunity to do so. Um, and following, uh, public testimony, it'll go back to the planning commission and, and, and if there's anything else that needs to be added at that point.
Okay.
Um, I, I have from the development group, I have Krista Tyson and Josh. All three of you are unmuted. Could you please tell me if there is anyone else in here that I'm missing?
No, that's all of us.
Okay, all right. Get into it. Um, so this, this is a plan, uh, that has been brought forth um, for a lot that is located right around the intersection of Minor Road and Pine Creek Road. Um, there would be about twenty, I think twenty-two, uh, lots up top coming off of Minor Road. Um, the, the plan proposes a private road. Um, and, and I believe one estate lot at the end there. Uh, there are, I think, six other, um, residential parcels, uh, that would be located off of Pine Creek Road in this plan. Um, at this point, we're just looking at a preliminary approval submittal, um, because there is more than one parcel ultimately that's involved. One, one of the, uh, the parcel in the very back of sort of the main portion of this plan that would be coming off of Minor Road. Um, I believe that is one of the estate lots that is being, you know, that second parcel is being used for. So this qualifies for a preliminary application submission. They would need to come back for final approval. Um, you know, other than that, I, I think I'll defer, um, to our engineers preliminary comments if he has any. And then, you know, let the developers get into the presentation because, uh, you know, I, I think that contextually it makes a little more sense to, have them explain fully what they're looking at before, you know, I go into any more detail.
Thank you, RJ. Um, my name is Dan Dazeroth, I'm the, the town engineer. And, uh, my role in reviewing this plan is to take a look at the McCandless ordinances and determine how this plan complies or does not comply, uh, with the ordinances that are on, on, at the town. So my review was broken down into a number of different sections related to the project. Uh, first of all, they presented a plan of lots, which is basically a subdivision of the land. Uh, in particular, they're looking to carve the land up into individual lots. And, uh, one of the main issues identified within the plan of lots uh, was that the requirement for a, uh, private road, what they're, which they're proposing for a right of way is fifty feet and a cul-de-sac, uh, with a right-of-way diameter of one hundred feet. Uh, the plan as it is submitted, uh, proposes a thirty-foot right-of-way and a ninety-foot diameter cul-de-sac. Uh, the town ordinance does allow the, um, the developer to make a request for modification on issues such as this. Uh, but, uh, in this case, uh, we've not received any information with regards to, uh, how, uh, the plan, if it is modified, uh, is made better or is, it meets, it currently meets the standard, uh, that we have on the books. There's a requirement for the submission of modifications to the town council and ultimately town council has the right to approve or not approve, uh, any modifications. I would re- review things and respond to the town council related to any technical aspects that they're being presented and give my comments. So, um, that, that particular issue, uh, the modification issue i- is, uh, is the main focus of, uh, at least the initial part of my review. Uh, because the whole plan is predicated, uh, based upon that, uh, right-of-way that is shown as thirty feet and the cul-de-sac diameter at ninety feet. So, uh, that is a key element that they would have to obtain that. Uh, other than that, on the subdivision comments, uh, there are a number of other, uh, requirements. Uh, I have fourteen comments and all related to the subdivision plan. I'm not going to go through all of those comments. Uh, but one of, one of the other elements, it's very important to note on this plan that the improvements are proposed to be private and there would have to be, uh, some notes that would be uh, reviewed by the town solicitor relative to the responsibility for operation and maintenance of any of the facilities, uh, if it is a private road. Uh, there is a note on the plan that talks about sanitary source being private. Uh, I think that that's probably an error because the, uh, the plans, uh, in this, uh, development must be serviced though by a public sanitary source. Uh, that's a particular requirement of our ordinance. So, um, that's the first part, the, uh, review of the plan of lots, uh, where we cut up the, the parcel into, into individual lots. Uh, the second part of it is the land development. Land development is, is the aspect of whereby they move the dirt, install the utilities, uh, put everything in that's necessary to create the lots. Uh, and, um, in particular, I'm just going to highlight, I have a number of different comments under this. But, uh, in particular, uh, there, there's a requirement under section thirteen seventy-one oh nine about preserving trees. And, uh, there's been no evidence of a tree survey or how the trees will be addressed on this particular plan. Uh, so I've identified that, uh, as a major issue. Uh, the second major issue that I've identified is that the proposed paving of the road, uh, the private road, uh, the plan is a, for a twenty-foot cartway, uh, the town requirement is for a twenty-four-foot cartway. Again, uh, the developer would have to request a, uh, modification for this. Uh, we've not received any information related to the modification. So, uh, that, that's the major comments, uh, again, related to the land development. Uh, I'll move on next to the geotechnical comments. Uh, we reviewed this, uh, project from a geotechnical perspective. Uh, for those of you listening in that don't know what geotechnical engineering is, it's basically, uh, looking at the underlying geology of the site, determining whether the soils have the capabilities to support the cuts and fills that are proposed for the development. Uh, this particular project, uh, we were furnished with a geotechnical report, uh, which was appreciated. Uh, but we found a number of different deficiencies related to the geotechnical report that was submitted. It was reviewed by a geotechnical engineer in our office. Uh, there were five major comments, I'm sorry, seven major comments related to it. And, uh, really, uh, there, there's some major i- items that were not identified in the slope stability analysis. Basically, the classifying of material and how it was classified, and that plays into the slope stability. Uh, when, when a developer plans to cut and fill and place fill to build lots, we require something called a slope stability analysis that makes sure that once that, uh, that, uh, earth and material is put in and compacted, that it remains stable, it can support a house and those types of things. So, uh, I'm not going to bore everybody with all the, the minute details of that, just to say that, uh, we need more information on the geotechnical side of this, uh, to make sure that we're comfortable, uh, that the project can be built. Another thing that's important in the, in the North Hills, especially in McCandless and, and anything north of the Allegheny River, uh, we do have red beds, uh, they're, they're typically very slippery clays. Uh, there was nothing identified in the borings related to that, uh, but as they were classified, we're not sure that they were encountered or not. Uh, so that, uh, that concludes the geotechnical comments. Uh, the next major items that I looked at was the grading comments. In particular, the town has a grading ordinance. Uh, the town grading ordinance states that, uh, fills, that being the land where, on the low side of the lots where they place the fill, uh, where you can't exceed three to one, three horizontal to one vertical for fills. Uh, in this case, uh, the developer has proposed two to one in the fill areas. Uh, they have made a request for modification, uh, but, uh, there doesn't appear to be sufficient information to substantiate the request for, for that, uh, modification, uh, which again, ultimately has to be approved by town council. Uh, the second item is that, uh, there are buffer areas required for walls. Uh, this plan includes, uh, a number of walls at the toe of slopes because they're trying to limit the grading so that they're not encroaching into the floodplain that lies along Pine Creek as it passes through the site. Uh, those walls, as they're proposed, uh, in the town ordinance, uh, they require buffers. Uh, there was no indication of any buffers on the plan that I could find. Uh, they also need to provide details related to the walls. Uh, it is not typical, uh, for the development of single-family plans, uh, to place walls at the toe of fill slopes. Uh, so we're going to be very, very much be caring about the details and that those walls will be substantial enough, uh, to support the fills and we don't have that information yet. Uh, as it relates to slopes, uh, they, uh, they need to indicate compliance with other sections of the ordinance, which require certain setbacks related to slopes. I've identified those in my letters, the sections, uh, we need, need that information. So, uh, I had a total of eight comments related to the grading, uh, and, uh, we'll move on from there. Uh, the next section of the ordinance and the standalone ordinance that we have in the town is related to stormwater. Uh, the stormwater, as it's proposed for this particular project, uh, will provide for a basin to be constructed on the property, uh, that basin will provide both for, uh, stormwater control for the additional, uh, developed area, the houses, the, the lots, uh, the homes and the streets. Uh, the increase in the runoff will be controlled in the facilities that they have. Uh, they're also required to, uh, adhere to water quality standards. And, uh, I don't want to, uh, again, I have a number of comments related to the stormwater. Uh, there are actually uh, forty comments related to the stormwater management submission. A lot of those are very technical, I'm not going to go through of all of those. Uh, the other major item that we did not see was a wetland report, uh, whether it was a delineation. I believe there was a delineation, but on the site, but we did not see it or see any wetlands identified in particular on the project. Uh, then, uh, moving on to the next, uh, uh, items that we looked at, uh, traffic, uh, in particular, uh, would affect, uh, this particular project would have on, on traffic. Uh, as it relates to the trip generation, we've asked for, uh, peak hour trips to be generated by the development. And if there would be any impacts related to the intersections, uh, that being at least at Minor and Pine Creek. Uh, in addition, uh, we're asking them to provide, uh, site distance measurements at the proposed intersection of Avid uh, road, which is the new road they're proposing in Minor Road. Uh, then as we move on to Pine Creek, where they're developing a number of lots, uh, six of those are proposed along Pine Creek Road. Uh, they will require permits from PennDOT, minimum use driveway permits. And, uh, to assure that adequate site distance exists if driveways would be constructed on the road. And, uh, we've not seen anything in terms of site distance measurements, uh, for the roads. Uh, then, uh, as it relates to also to, uh, Pine Creek Road, there's a guide rail along there that's going to have to be removed. They need a permit for that. And, uh, there is also guide rail along the property frontage in the area of, uh, the access. Uh, so we're going to need some details related to that. And then finally, my letter includes general comments. Uh, general comments would be, uh, just normal things, other things that are required for a plan of this nature. And, uh, again, I'll, I'll reiterate that based upon the number of comments that I have in my review, I would respectfully reserve the right to make additional comments once additional information is received. Uh, in terms of, uh, uh, another, the major general comment is, we do need to have, uh, any requests for these modifications that they've asked for, these major, these major changes to town standards must be submitted in accordance with the, the rules which are listed in the, in, uh, section thirteen sixty-one oh six of the ordinance. Uh, the project is going to require an NPDES permit. Uh, that's a federal permit for release of the stormwater into waters of the Commonwealth. Uh, that would be issued by the PADEP and, uh, the erosion and sedimentation controls will be reviewed by Allegheny County, uh, Conservation District. Uh, those, uh, plans probably have not been submitted yet because they have not been through town council, but would need proof of, uh, those permits, uh, uh, would have to be provided to the town. Uh, they are proposing, if any work is proposed to be completed, uh, along the creek in the, uh, in the floodway, uh, if they're touching any wetlands, uh, they would have to obtain a chapter one oh five permit, uh, which is a, again, a DEP permit. Uh, a project of this nature would also require various agreements, uh, that have to execute a stormwater management agreement. Uh, they would need highway occupancy permit, as I've already listed. Uh, they need to provide letters, uh, from all the utility companies confirming that they could service the project. Uh, the plan would need approved by the McCandless Township Sanitary Authority, who provides, uh, sewer service. A, uh, Department of Environmental Protection sewage facilities planning module would have to be submitted. Uh, that's an element, uh, by which the, the town would, uh, would say that their official sewage facilities plan, uh, would be serviced by public sewers to service this property. Uh, it's just another element of the approvals that are required. Uh, the plan would have to be removed, reviewed, uh, by the fire marshal. Uh, Westview Water, uh, would have to determine that they can service the plan. And then, uh, if, if all of these other things can be accomplished, there'd still be a requirement. Uh, if it was, uh, if it got to the finish line for approval, there'd be requirements for a developer's agreement that would contain, uh, a lot of these particular stipulations that we've talked about. Uh, so that's a lot. Um, you know, my general opinion is, uh, that the plan, uh, it, it, as submitted, uh, we need a lot more information, uh, before, before, uh, I have any comfort level when suggesting that it's ready to, to, to move on anywhere. So that's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Uh, it sounds like, uh, we did, first of all, did you get any response to your letter?
I did not.
Okay. So it, it almost seems like this whole plan is kind of mooted, that, that it's just not, it's not complete enough even to review. But, um, I, I will turn this over to the other planning commission members and see what they have to say. Do you have anything to, to add on this, Irv?
I think, uh, you know, Mr. Dazeroth, you reviewed the plan, they submitted, did they submit everything such that it's complete? It's just there's a number of defects or, or modifications not requested, or basically things that wouldn't meet the code. But would you say a complete application at this point?
Yeah, the application was complete, all the, all the data that was required for review.
Right, so, so at that point, you have a complete application, um, that's before you, I think, you know, the, you, you would, the applicant will speak and at least listening to Mr. Dazeroth, there seems to be a lot of work to do on the plan, uh, to get it in some sort of fashion that, you know, you could really intelligently, uh, review, but, or even, you know, to get. or even, you know, to get to that level. But I think, you know, that's where you stand with it right now.
All right. RJ, do you have any comments on this?
I think they have covered pretty much everything technical. However, we do have the developer slated to present tonight, and, and I should say that, that there wasn't, although there wasn't a direct letter response yet to our engineer's comment letter, which went out, I believe it was on Friday. Which is again, pretty typical. Now we've, we've got them coming out about a week before the meetings, but Tyson Miller, one of the representatives from the development, did give me a call today and just check and see if they needed anything formal and writing, which we do not require, which typically the, the engineers' letters are, you know, this is our review at this point, once you get to the planning commission and present. So that's all standard, but I, I just should note that they did at least reach out and acknowledge the letter prior to the meeting. All that said, I believe they've, they've got three folks here to give a presentation tonight that, you know, perhaps that will answer some of the technical questions, or they can take feedback from the planning commission for how to move forward.
All right. Who is, who is here to present?
I guess I could speak first if it's okay. My name is Thank you. My name's Krista Kachowski. I'm with that Lynch Law Group. I'm here to speak on behalf of Adamic Ventures, which is the developer, as well as the owner, which is Pine Creek Holdings. And actually, my role today is, is sort of limited. It was to present evidence to support the request for the grading modification that was mentioned by Mr., is it, I have my network patcher name and quickly, Diesel Roth?
I saw that. That's good.
I saw Roth. Thank you very much. So I'll just say township engineer. How's that?
Great.
I, I was here today to present some evidence to support the request for the modification of the grading ordinance. And then also Tyson and I are here prepared to speak to the modification request relative to the private road and the right of way with that the township engineer had mentioned. So if that's okay, would you as likely proceed with, with the support for the grading modification request or?
Sure.
Okay, great. Thank you. So I did submit a memorandum. Just I think we, I think Tyson assisted me in submitting it to the township earlier today. And the really, the purpose of that memorandum was just to clarify the standard applicable to this particular modification request. Because in that the grading ordinance is a standalone ordinance, the standard to support this request is a little bit more less strict, I should say, than a typical request for a variance or a special exception. So I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page with the standard applicable to secure this modification so that the evidence that I present goes along with the elements that are required to satisfy that standard. And Herb, if you don't mind me calling your name out, I did call and speak to Gavin this morning to see, you know, if there was any type of dispute as to the standard applicable to this particular modification, modification request. And then he mentioned that you were going to be covering this evening. So I'll just state that that the standard is identified in seventeen oh five point oh five K. And it is again, a little bit less strict than most, and it specifically provides that the modification should be granted. And I'll just speak from the statute quickly, that the exception may be requested to one or more requirements of these standards for grading when the location, shape, or topography of the particular parcel of land is such that strict conformance of the requirements would cause undue hardship, serve no useful purpose, or be a detriment to the overall quality of the project. And such an exception should not be contrary to the requirement or spirit of the town's comprehensive plan. So then the memorandum that we have submitted just goes through and identifies why we meet that standard, particularly the last sentence, which I think that we do have sufficient evidence to prove that being compelled to the three to one fill slope requirement would be a detriment to the overall quality of the project. And furthermore, that the proposed modification is not contrary to the spirit of the town's comprehensive plan.
I, I just
Krista?
Here before we go any memo content?
The, the, what's, what document were you quoting when you mentioned the seventeen oh five or whatever it was?
Yes, sir. It was just, it was the memorandum that we had submitted today.
But what is it, what is it based on? Is it based on some law or is it based on our ordinance?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's the grading ordinance itself.
Okay, okay.
To be clear, the document, the memorandum we're referring to, I received at
You're gonna have to stand closer to your, your thing.
That's right. I'm so sorry. This, the microphone on this laptop is not as good as my normal one. I just wanted to clarify and make, you know, on the record, the memorandum that we're referring to, I received at seven twenty-three tonight. So myself, the engineer and our legal counsel has not had the chance to review it yet. If anyone has any questions on our end, we, we're gonna have to hold that for now.
Yeah, Mrs. So we're absolutely happy to resubmit a more formal modification request if that's necessary, and I can attach all these as exhibits because obviously this is a preliminary plan approval, as pointed out by the township engineer earlier this evening. So we're happy to do that, so everyone can have it in hand. I know it's a little bit difficult to review documents on a Zoom conference call. So we're happy to do that. But if it's okay, I'd just like to go through the rest of it.
Yeah, please go ahead. I, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for the, the planning commission in case they asked us to opine on anything yet.
No, of course. So yeah, so that, that section is just straight from the grading ordinance. So because that ordinance is a standalone ordinance, it actually has its own provision at subsection K that speaks to, you know, what the standard for that modification of that particular grading ordinance is. And since it's a less strict standard, I just wanted to start out with that so everyone can understand what it is I was trying to satisfy with the evidence. Although, so Mrs. Scott, I'm not sure if, I know you weren't going to use, I know you're not using split pages. I think Tyson said that, but we did submit three drawings to utilize and explaining our evidence. Were we able to show those?
Yeah, I, I should be able to. Those, those are the ones that came in today, not part of the, the submittal. I just, I have them, I have them saved in a couple of different places. I want to make sure I pull the right ones up.
Well, to clarify, they were part of the submittal, but we tried to
These are the, the PDFs that you pulled out specifically. Okay.
I had to make it a little bit more clear to, to to a, a layperson, so to speak.
All right. So I've got the first exhibit here. I'm going to put this up on the screen. If this isn't the one you're looking for, I will pull the second one up and we'll see if we've got it. A moment. Can't say I would recommend running a meeting on two laptops, but we're gonna do our best here. All right. Is this the one you're looking for?
Yes.
Great. Yes, that is the first one. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to try to guide the presentation, but of course we'll rely heavily upon Tyson as he is the engineer here. So this drawing is to aid in our discussion on how mandating the three to one fill slope would be detrimental to the overall quality of the project, which is one of the elements to meet this standard for this particular modification request. And what this is, again, I'm sure Tyson can explain it much better than I, but the gist of it is that having a three to one fill slope requirement for this project will in essence crush the depth of the buildable bench area. And that in essence just means the, the flat buildable area of land that the building envelope can go on. So in other words, just the flat space that's suitable to place a home upon. So the depth of the buildable bench will be crushed if the three to one is mandated. And we were hoping to give a specific example and then to you and then apply it to the rest of the lots generally. But what I can tell you is that utilizing a three to one fill slope will result in thirty-eight to forty-eight feet less of buildable area. And the reason why that's so significant is because the average buildable area in this development in the first instance is only eighty-five feet. So when you couple that with the setback requirements, in particular the front and side setback requirements in thirty-five feet and the side being fifteen feet. What happens is that shrinking the buildable area by thirty-eight to forty-eight feet basically obliterates the majority of the buildable space. And this particular drawing is to show you how that occurs, and we're using lot sixteen as our example. And lot sixteen is on the private road called Avid Road in the, in the submission documents. And I, kind of help me out here, Tyler, so but I think Tyson, but I think it'll show, I think on here, if anyone can see, it says eighty-five, which I had a little arrow. It says eighty-five bench typical, which if you look at maybe line eleven sixty on the far left-hand corner, thank you. That is just to illustrate the average buildable bench depth on a particular lot in this project. And to give you, I guess, maybe a some, something to go by here. If you see CL, that's the center line of the right of way. So the two red lines on the other side of CL is the edge of the right of way identified on the planned submission. So that's the edge of the road, if you will, that sits private road that sits between the two sides of the street in the development, which is called Avid Road. So if you look at where the average eighty-five feet are, you can see maybe closer to the CL, you'll see where it says actually bottom of the page, it'll say thirty-five front yard setback. So Tyson has identified that by a red line. So you can see, so obviously there's no ability to build between the road and that thirty-five front yard setback. So that area is gone. So then if we are able to use the two to one bill slope standard, then we will have a fifty-foot deep building envelopes. That's the only area that can be built upon. If the modification request is not granted and we are stuck with doing the, the three to one, then in essence, it brings it down to let's see here, my numbers. I think it's two feet. It brings it down to two feet upon which to build a home. So of course, can't build a home on two feet. So if the, if we can do the two to one, if the, if the modification is granted and it's two to one, there's fifty feet upon which the home can be built. If it is not granted and three to one is mandated, then there's like two feet upon which the home can be built, which of course will not be possible. So even though I know there's a lot of shows now about small homes, but that's even too small for that. So that will not, the, the entire project will become unfeasible. And that, I think we have a draw, a second drawing that might be useful.
This one, are you looking at this one or are you looking at the other?
One, yes. No, that one's perfect. Thank you.
Hang on, let me get this right ways up. There you go.
Okay, thanks. I guess not all the lots are shown on this particular one, but so this is, if you can, the Avid Road is the, is the center private road there. And the, and I'll call them the lower lots of Avid Road, if you will, and that's lots fourteen, and it goes over to twenty-one, which is the subject of the modification request. So every single one of those lots, it's the same situation as lot sixteen that we just discussed. Every single one will result in a build space that's a little bit different from lot to lot because the lot sizes change a little bit. But overall, it will result in a maximum build space of less than twenty feet, which again, of course, is not space suitable to build a single family home. I really, this particular drawing I think is also useful or more useful to talk about the impact of being compelled to have a three to one fill standard as opposed to two to one that's being requested in connection with Pine Creek. So Pine Creek is the other road that's, you know, part of this development and that has the six lots on it. And if you, you can see where it's highlighted in yellow, that is where the floodplain exists that was mentioned by the township engineer earlier. So if you look at lot twenty-six, we chose to use, oh, well, can you scroll up to see that? Or no, scroll down to see where it's, I'm highlighting yellow, it says twenty-six.
It one goes down.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's still a little bit to the right. It's, so it's if you look where the, all the red, the floodway is, and you look down, further down on the page, it's highlighted twenty-six. So that's lot twenty-six. So we try to use that as an example. And if you look at that lot, again, account for the thirty-five foot front setback that's required. Then if we're able to use the two to one, there is then a forty-foot buildable bench. So that is the only space depth-wise available to build a home. If we're required to do the, excuse me, if we're allowed to do the two to one, then we can, if we're allowed to the two to one, excuse me, if I do the two to one, then it'll give us forty buildable feet to, to put a home on. If we're not in the three to one standard is mandated, then that only leaves an eighteen-foot buildable foot space. So of course, again, eighteen feet in depth is not, will not support a single family home's footprint. And that applies across the board to all of the lots on Pine Creek Road. So overall, the lower half of Avid Road would be gone and all Pine Creek lots would be gone. So the, of course, using that standard I mentioned earlier, that it has an overall detriment to the, to, to the project, to the quality of the project. Clearly, I hope everyone can see that if we're permitted to use the two to one, then the project will be feasible. If it's mandated, three to one is required, then it will be completely unfeasible and the majority of the land will be unbuildable for purposes of a single family planned residential community. The second half of these I'm sorry? Was someone speaking?
The proximity to the floodplain of these lots might also be considered a detriment to the project. Is, is there any consideration? Oh, for the, the rear is going to interface with it?
Yeah. So, okay, thank you. So applying the, if we're mandated, we're, we're subject to the three to one fill slope, if the modification is not granted, the bench on the Pine Creek properties will go into the floodplain. So we, we need the modification or else, again, it won't be buildable because it'll be too, the lots will either be too small, buildable bench and/or they will, the, the homes would have to encroach, the building space would have to encroach upon the floodplain.
The, the first page that we highlighted there was assuming that we did not want to encroach into the floodplain and kept the same tow slope for the analysis of the two to one versus the three to one. However, you know, I think as what RJ is trying to say is that would be the other way to look at it. You could keep the same buildable building envelope up top, but then your tow slope extends, you know, out into the floodplain and possibly floodway, depending on the lot.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just want to be clear that my comment was more directed at how difficult it would be to develop lots that are in a floodplain in general.
Yeah, Tyson always used to tell that more, but in my understanding is that there, there is sufficient buildable space if the modification is granted, that it, there, there will not be an encroachment.
Yes, that's correct.
I'm, I'm gonna interrupt for just one second. You used as an example lot twenty-six. But if you move, as you move to the right, you get down to lot twenty-nine and lot thirty, there seems to be very little space there for buildable. Am I reading that correctly?
Yes. I mean, we're showing the same buildable area for those, for all of those six lots. But, you know, as Krista mentioned, depending on which lot you analyze, the ratio of the fill slope dictates how much usable area would be eaten up by converting it to three to one rather than two to one. We just felt for the illustration purposes, it was easiest to show this lot twenty-six because it was proximate to lots sixteen in the cross section we had shown on the previous page.
Yeah. And I know, I know that the intended homes, the size of the homes on Pine Creek, which would be lots twenty-six through, what, let's see, I have a, I have an overall one here.
Two thirty-one.
Six to thirty-one. Thank you. That the homes on those lots will be smaller. So the footprint required for those homes can be smaller, but just not as small as they would be compelled to be if the modification for the fill slope isn't granted. It's either, it, it results in either, again, creating a building space that's too small to utilize and/or having the encroachment in, into the floodplain. So I guess I probably, Tyson, I, I would like it, could you, do you want to explain that a little bit better than I am? Because obviously that's your valley work, not mine. Because obviously that's your valley work, not mine.
Well, again, I think the gist of it is, it's, it's sort of an either-or proposition, either, you know, if we were trying to maintain. The, the lower lots fourteen through twenty-one with that same buildable area as shown in. The plan that's requesting the modification, that's one approach, or the alternate approaches. I'm sorry, so with that, with that approach preserving that buildable area, it resulted in that tow slope being the floodplain. But as we're aware, that flooding concerns are paramount with this particular stream in general. We've done our best to keep the grading even outside of the five-hundred-year floodplain. You know, wherever the, where only the one-hundred-year floodplain is, is actually required.
RJ, can you please tell us, why is it that we have an ordinance? That requires a one-to-three as opposed to a one-to-two?
Well, so, okay. With the caveat that I was not here when, when that was established, but in, and maybe. You know, our engineer can, can jump in with any sort of technical justification, my general assumption would be it's either. You know, the logic is A, whether the lots would be attractive from an aesthetic and land use standpoint. With the steepness of a slope in the rear. Or, you know, whether there was a concern about compaction where it's more difficult when you have a steeper slope. To make sure that the stability is there. Dan, how'd I do?
I mean, in, in general. Three-to-one is a, I, I believe it was dis presumed to be a safer. Type of a slope without, with the absence of geotechnical data. If, if geotechnical data is presented that can support a two-to-one. Most ordinances now are built with a provision that you have to provide. That geotechnical data that, that supports a two-to-one slope, so I, I think that that's the reason, that's the reason. At least that I've experienced over the years in reviewing plans in the town.
And that's one of the things that we're missing is that the geotech.
They've provided geotechnical data, but in, in my engineer's opinion. It's insufficient for us to, to gauge right now whether this modification. Technically could be built the way it's proposed, or they're proposing it.
How can we make a decision, how can we make a decision about changing the slope when we don't have all the information?
We have information, Kim, but we, we said that it, it needs, we need more information to make that determination, you're correct.
If I, if I may, just quickly, I did hear the township engineer say earlier that he did not have a slope stability assessment. Which of course would be necessary, completely agree, but I think if Tyson can chime in here, a slope stability assessment was created.
I didn't say that there wasn't a slope stability.
No, 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 I, I'm sorry, I was just, I thought that you did, but I was just going to tell you that it does speak to. Why the two-to-one fill slope would be stable in the situation, but of course, we're happy to provide any additional information. That would be, you know, responsive to that directly.
If I recall correctly, and again, I'm sorry that I keep sticking my face in the camera, but I know the microphone on this one isn't great. If I recall correctly, some of the comments in the engineers that were, that. The red beds and, and the soil that's more prone to landslides need to be identified a little more clearly in the location. If there's another document that contains that, I'm not aware of it, you know, maybe that's something that, that. The developers and the engineers need to, to work on. But, you know, definitely that would be concerning to me if we're assessing slope stability for considering any of these modifications. We need to know actually where those landslide-prone soils are.
Exactly.
I'd like to make a couple comments here. We have had. Slides in the past, landslides in the past, some quite severe in the town. And I think that's where the three-to-one fill slope came in. In fact, they were, they were considering at one point going to three-to-one for the cut slopes, but they. Dialed that back, but we've had some, some, some major problems because of some of these slide-prone soils. So I, I think that's possibly part of the reason that they have that, that in the ordinance.
And if I, and if I can, oh, good.
No, no, please, this is, this is the Zoom meeting problem, especially when you're screen sharing, please continue.
Okay, well, no, right, and you know, one of the requirements, of course, in any modification is. That it's not going to be contrary to public interest, that the, the ordinance as written has no useful purpose. So to establish that, you know, you're really, you know, the geotechnical report is very important for them to even, you know, get to the standard, which. You, we don't have tonight, and so, you know, hopefully you'll get at one point, but that's, that's fundamental to their presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, so let, let me, I guess, comment on that real quick, and we have done extensive geotechnical investigation. On the site in anticipation of needing to provide the slope stability analysis, you know. Independent of whether or not we needed a modification, we're aware that that was something that was going to be sensitive to the town, so. For what it's worth, we have several other similar projects that we're working through that gateways, the reviewing engineers, so. I'm confident that the comments that are listed in this report are of a nature that we can address to gateway's. Geotechnical engineer satisfaction, you know, we, we reviewed in. What, just as a quick aside, we didn't resubmit a formal letter because there are a couple of comments that. That we have some technical questions on that we need to discuss with Gateway, I didn't want to necessarily submit. An incomplete response, so, but we have, you know, reviewed all of, all of Gateway's comments. And you know, are prepared to talk about any of them individually, but again, as it's pertinent to this geotechnical analysis. You know, our slope stability calculations are presently showing greater than one, one-point-five-six was the. The least factor of safety in the analyses that we ran. Were typically in the range of one-point-three, one-point-five is the, is the standard. But we did not believe that any of the commentary in that letter would result in. A reduction in that factor of safety. Obviously, we have to get that and prove that to Gateway, but that's my, that's our initial assessment.
Can I ask a question, please, and this, from a pure layman's standpoint. The Avid Road that cuts through these properties, the lots that are on the upside of that road. Lots one through ten or eleven, those are extremely deep lots. And four hundred feet, if I'm reading some of them correctly. And why would you not move Avid Road up? Making those lots less deep, giving you more room on this, the bottom side. So that you'd have more room to build and not have these slope issues, is there something that I'm missing that you could easily. Shorten those upper lots by twenty, thirty, forty feet, put it all on the southern lots. May I solve some of this problem?
Yeah, I can answer that for two reasons. This project was the subject of a variance submission. I don't know, well, year and a half, two years ago, which was ultimately denied on appeal. And what happens is because of the slope of the, of the existing terrain, shifting that road to the north. You, if you've ever heard the concept of chasing grade, it chases that grade almost up to the point where it grades into the backyards of. Subbury or Sunbury, whatever the name of that street is, so, you know, we. Again, as part of that, that variance application, we had met with the neighbors and, and those neighbors had voiced their concerns about grading that close to their property. So we are sensitive to that issue, but the more important reason is, is that generates an extreme amount of cut. You know, we have done concepts where that was the case. But both from a financial and a practical sense, it doesn't make sense to have thousands and thousands of trucks hauling dirt out of this development. So, you know, that's going to impact roadways and other infrastructure. And this site, you know, is pretty close to balancing the way that we have it now, so really, again, from a practical perspective. That's why the road is situated where it is.
I think, I think that the, the topography of the area obviously isn't, you know, visible when you're just looking at this drawing. And so even if buildable state space is available to us that we need with the grading modification. The backyard to these lots will be maximum five to ten feet, so there really isn't anywhere else to push them back.
He, he's referring to the total depth of the actual lots, which are, you know, relatively. You know, ninety feet wide in general, and as, as he indicated, it's a couple hundred feet deep, so they are somewhat unusually shaped. And again, that is based on the topography.
All right, thank you, I, I was not taking topography into account because I can't see the topography.
So I, I mean, just for, for my end of things, of course, I, I think Tyson will clearly provide any information requested that's specific to. Why it is stable and safe to grant this particular modification on grading. And, and as in a supplement, but just from the legal perspective, it's just important for me to stress on the record the standard. Because I know, I think I heard Herb mention about that we would have to establish that there's no useful purpose of the ordinance. And I would just respectfully submit that that's not necessary for me to establish that. The, the grading ordinance exception, there's an or. So, you know, we, we either have to establish that there's an undue hardship created by the topography. It serves no useful purpose, the grading ordinance, or that it's a detriment to the overall quality of the project. And that it's, of course, always has to meet the spirit of the town, the town's comprehensive plan, so. Do you think that we'd be able to, once we produce the information that is sought here today to establish the stability? Of the project, even with the two-to-one. I think that that will be a sufficient basis to evidence that the, that being mandated to three-to-one would be a detriment to the overall quality of the project. As just talked about, and as far as meeting the townships, you know, the spirit of the comprehensive plan. Yeah, I did look at that and that's quoted in the memorandum, which I understand hasn't been, I, it was produced so late that it hasn't been circulated to all to, to consider. But, you know, it just is the part of that comprehensive plan spirit is to support development. You know, as long as it's done correctly, and so we think that that would be in the spirit of the, of the plan. And also, we would, I would note, and I, and I know it doesn't matter if somebody else gets it, doesn't mean you get it. But I would note that the project actually that was spoke about earlier today, the Walnut Court. Submitted a very similar modification request previously, they asked for the grading modification to go from three-to-one to two-to-one and it was granted. So it just, it's not out of realm of the spirit of the township's plan.
Um, just a real quick, clarifying question for, I'm going to shoot this over to our town engineer. Because he's, he's been with the town far longer than I have. Dan, do you recall if the Walnut Court plan had any rear yards that were backing into a floodplain?
Uh, no, it did not.
Okay, any fill slopes that were backing into a floodplain?
No, it did not.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Was there Pine Creek at the base of these plans?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Just, I guess, just on that note, though, I think that's even further support for the modification request. Because that's goes to the first, the first potential standard is due to the peculiar nature of the topography and, of this particular land. That's, that's why we're asking for the modification, I mean, that's the whole point, because it does exist, that's why we're asking for the modification. And we're, we're asking for it only to implement it completely safely and, and into the satisfaction of the township.
Is, is it possible that maybe this is just too much to fit on this lot? And that's the reason that you're having to have these requests and these variances that maybe. This much building does not fit on this much property that has this topography, that's also a possibility, I would think.
I'm counsel here, so I'm going to have to lead that question to the developer. I can't see everyone on the screen, Josh, you want to comment?
Yes, to answer that question, answer that comment. We're trying to find the highest and best use for the property, it doesn't. The project that we're proposing is right in line with most other developments in the area in McCandless Township. We're just working within the topography of, of the property.
I, I think at least at one part, certainly the planning commission members may have more comments. Here's, you know, kind of where I'm at on this particular modification, because this is not the only one. That's involved in, you know, potentially whether this plan would move forward, there are certainly issues with the, with the roadway, the right-of-way. You know, I know we're kind of focusing on the, the slope because that's a, that's a big one right now, but. We're going to need more information, you know, about, obviously, I think it's been made clear that we need more information on the geotech report. About slope stability, it's really hard for. Me, at least at this point, to fully take a position without further information about what exact soil types are in which locations. You know, if we're going back to the spirit of the comp plan, part of it is that we're supposed to be, you know, preserving. Natural amenities, forests, watercourses, wetlands, and on the one hand, you could say, well, yeah, if we develop with. This two-to-one slope, we're preserving more wetlands, we're preserving, well, I shouldn't say that because I don't know if you'd necessarily exactly be disturbing them with these lots, so. We're preserving more watercourses, we're preserving more of the floodway, but. Even if you use these slopes, you know, half of these lots are still on the floodway, I mean, lot twenty-eight. That's almost a solid half of it that's, that's in there with what you got, so. I, I just have some concerns from a planning perspective, I clearly, the engineers identified those as well. Members of the commission, if you have any more particular questions about this. You know, maybe now's the time, but I, I think we need to get more information about the slope stability before we really. You know, take a position.
I think, I think you're right, RJ, the other, the other issue really is the, the road. The right-of-way, the size of the road and so forth, that also impacts the same issue. And I'd like to have Krista comment on, on that.
Of course, so I guess, I, I'm happy to go through that, but. After doing so, I'll just, I'll just submit that I, I noted the township engineer's comment about modification also being requested or needed, I should say. To address the cartway difference, so I'm happy to go through what we've prepared so far today about the right-of-way modification being sought. But also.
Krista, let me interject one second, just, just to go back to the last point real quick. You know, if there's concern about, you know, why these lots are so deep or so large and half the lots in the floodway. You know, we are proposing open space, all of these lots are, are, you know, exceed the minimum lot area of twelve thousand considerably. So it would not be. Out of character, let's say, to, to create one large open space utilizing that area. I don't want to seriously speak for Josh, but just from a physical perspective. You know, if, if you're concerned about people purchasing a lot that's half in the floodplain, you know, that, there's a way to. Lay out the lots, but that's not, not the case.
Thank you, sir, I just, so my, I, I will absolutely respond to the question substantively. But I would just also just, I guess, take this opportunity to just request the opportunity to, you know, file the supplements, file more paperwork, in essence, so you have it in hand. For, you know, so you can make a more informed decision, because since the modification on the, on the cartway. Seems to be necessary, it can be, you know, rolled in and presented at the same time with the written, you know, a further, better written request for the right-of-way. With modification, if, if the, if the township would entertain that, I'm sure that my client would appreciate that. But to answer the question substantively for this evening, I think there was one last drawing. That we had to speak to this issue.
Yes, let me back out of this and I'll, I'll pull the other one up here. Like I said, let me know if it's the right one, if it's, if it's not, we'll try again. And just to follow up on, on the last statement there, I mean, we're more than happy to take any other information or submittals as, as part of the application, it's still. You know, open for consideration. All right. Did I pick the right one?
Well, you know what, now my screen went, sorry. I think so, Tyson. Okay, so. I'm probably going to hand this off to Tyson for the more detailed response, but I will say generally, that's. Absent the modification request, that the result is going to be having the bottom. absent the modification request, that the result is going to be having the bottom lots one to twenty one. Again, so the buildable bench area, and that's not to say that the lots are small, it's just that the buildable area becomes too small to be utilized for purposes of the intended project. Or again, the issue with the lots fourteen to twenty one could potentially encroach into the floodplain, which is something that of course is a concern and should be avoided. So yet, again, it's just, we're trying to, we're trying, we're requesting these modifications just solely so we're doing everything correctly. We want, we don't want to interfere with the floodplain. We don't want to, you know, interfere with any, even, even the floodway. So we're just looking for these modifications so we're able to build the single family residences intended suitable for the community. I mean, again, I think Josh pointed out, and I think it's true, I think his intended, his intended development fits perfectly within other developments in, in McCandless. Obviously, it's a beautiful neighborhood and I think it would fit perfectly within the landscape of that neighborhood. And the modifications here are just being requested to further protect the land and make, make the best use of the flat areas in the development space.
What is the, what would be the disposition of this private road? Would you own that forever?
Yes, sir. So yeah, the, the private road is not being tendered to the township. I'm sure that, you know, my client, I want to speak out of turn, but there is a great appreciation for the fact that I think that the fifty foot with right of way requirement is probably mostly because a lot of these roads are asked to be turned over to the town, asked the township to be, to accept them. So that's not being done here. It is a private road. And it would be, the, the, the maintenance of that road would be provided for incorporated into any planned community documents that are necessary.
Because what, what has happened in the past is when, when private roads have been built. Over, over the years, these houses change hands a few times. The road deteriorates and they almost always petition the town to take over a private road.
Exactly right. Yeah. I mean, I, I completely appreciate that. I've got, I've actually had a lot of reverse situations where the township didn't want to take it over, but people didn't know that happened. And then ultimately statutorily, the road reverts to become privatized, to be joining property owners. But in this particular instance, yeah, that's, I mean, it's going to be completely accounted for by the, by the planned community documents. And there's always, it's either going to be a planned community where the association will be responsible. And or if it's individual lots being sold, there will be the appropriate, you know, common mutual easement agreement for maintenance recorded, of course.
Just a couple of other things. So the cartway, you only have projected at twenty feet. That's, that's really not wide enough. You know, people park on the sides of the road and so forth. It's hard to get cars through. And then secondly, do you plan to put sidewalks along all of these?
Yes, so sidewalks are proposed on both sides of the new private road. With respect to the cartway width and speaking with RJ's predecessor, the suggestion was made to, to run that past the fire marshal, which we did. And he indicated that twenty feet would be the minimum cartway width that he would be looking to see. So that, some of the reasons why this was set up in that fashion.
Can I get a real quick definition of a cartway?
It's the paved width of the roadway.
Say that again, please.
The paved width of the roadway.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought it was thirty feet.
That's the right of way.
Okay, all right.
Our code requires a twenty four foot cartway as, you know, an unmodified standard.
No, they would require a, a modification for both of those things, both the right of way and the cartway. Is that right?
Correct.
And there actually are a couple of roads in, in the town that are even narrower than the thirty foot right of way, private, private residential roads.
There are.
Apple Hill Lane is one, has twenty eight foot right of way.
There are, there are. Where do they go? There's, there's narrower right of ways also because, primarily because they were done before the zoning ordinance been passed. There have been a few done after that, but I think town council, for the most part, has insisted upon using the town standard for all new roads.
In terms of the pavement structure, the thickness of the pavement, you know, we would be using the township standard. So I know that that's a concern over time. If you have a private road that may be more apt to deteriorate, we are going to propose that, that standard, as I said, roadway thickness.
So the road would be owned by some sort of homeowners association?
Well, I suspect, I mean, it's either going to be one of two things. It'll either be an association that would maintain it and or if they're individually sold, then there'd be a common, you know, there'd be a mutual maintenance agreement amongst the lot owners that would be provided for and mandated in every deed. There'll be a covenant that would run with the land and be recorded.
And how, how would it get repaved? What, what would they need to do to repave this road in the future? I mean, what kind of, what kind of, what kind of permission by the landowners would they have to get?
Well, the mutual maintenance agreement, I mean, I guess I shouldn't, I don't want to make things too confusing. I mean, maybe Josh could, I don't know whether it's planned on being an association or not. But if it's, if it's a planned association, then obviously that's the easiest answer. If it's individually owned, then the mutual maintenance agreement that is recorded specifically, specifically provide for maintenance obligations, splitting costs associated with that, you know, timing of review of that and everything, you know, it's very specific. So and I'm, I'm sure that my client would authorize me to, to produce an example of one, if it assists the township in reviewing.
And it would be substantially similar to the stormwater management system that's proposing, which would also be subject to, you know, the same type of shared maintenance setup.
Would you have a homeowners association? Is that what you'd have?
Yes, we're planning for a homeowners association for the project.
And the stormwater management would also be maintained by the homeowners association?
Believe that's the, the discussions we had with Bruce previously, yes.
And our, our code does, am I close enough this time? Hopefully. Our code does have cooked into it a stormwater maintenance fee, which you've probably seen come through in a couple of the other developments. But I believe if it is a facility that is not owned by the town at the end of the development, which is pretty common. There, there is a stormwater maintenance fee that's paid to essentially cover the inspections that we would do for the next ten years.
Yeah, and there's a stormwater management agreement, right, that's, that's mandatory, of course, would be created to satisfy the township, for the town.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah, on a different issue. Do you intend to put sidewalks in along Minor Road and Pine Creek Road?
So the letter had made mention of sidewalks on Pine Creek. I did discuss this with Ms. Susko earlier today. Definitely believe we would be seeking the modification for Minor, as there is a stream parallel to Minor Road. That would make that implementation of a sidewalk there very difficult. But as I'm sure you're aware, on both Pine Creek and Minor Road, there aren't any adjacent sidewalks with which to connect anyway. So again, as discussed with town staff, that would be subject to additional modification request potentially.
I have you up to about four modifications. Are there others that you intend to apply for? I have the two to one slope versus the three to one slope. The road right of way width, the cartway width, and the sidewalks on Pine Creek and Minor. Are there others that, that you want to apply for?
That is all that we're aware of after the initial review discussions.
Chris, I'm sorry, have you reviewed, have you reviewed at all the grading ordinance as it relates to the height of fills? And the walls at the toe of fills, there's buffer requirements there and distances that they have to be off a property line? You might want to look at some of those because those may require additional modifications.
Yeah, I, I understand. Yeah, of course. I mean, I, I don't know that they do, but I appreciate that. I definitely have looked at them. I know the rest of the ordinance and I'm happy to. I think really would be best is to have the opportunity, it sounds like would be entertained to bullet point, you know, each piece of evidence that's supportive of the request, plus also each piece, a piece of evidence that's supportive of, you know, proving to you that the stability exists, even if it's two to one. I mean, I, I know that it's, it is three to one in this township, but it's their town, but it is tip, it used to typically always be lower than that. And now it's, in a lot of areas, they have, they have made it three to one. But it's also just with the caveat that it can be less as long as the geotech supports there for it. So we're, we're happy to do that.
Well, I, I understand that particular issue, but there are other nuances to the grading ordinance. In particular, I think when, when the ordinance was developed, there was the, there was the idea that to have long, very steep slope, fill slopes. In your case, the fill slope is going to be forty feet in height, ascending from the development down towards Pine Creek. So with that height of fill, there are certain requirements for setbacks and buffers and other things related to it. And again, I just call your attention to it because I, I believe it'll require some additional modifications.
Okay, I appreciate that. I mean, I, I only had possession of your review letter today. So I tried to go through it as quickly as I could, but I'm happy to go through it, you know, closer, right? And make sure that everything that you need, you have, so you can make the best decisions.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure Ted and the planning commission knew there may be other modifications required.
With particular document now. If there's anything else that the group wants to pull up, let me know. I, I think at this point, it's pretty clear that, that we need more information on at least a couple of different fronts, you know, before they can really tender an opinion on the modifications or the plan as a whole. But before, you know, we, we potentially move on to any other planning commission comments or get to the public comment point. I just wanted to ask our town attorney here, is there anything from a legal standpoint? I understand that you, we just got the modification memo, so you know, none of us have fully reviewed it yet. But is there any particular legal submittals that you can think of with a modification justification that we'd be looking for in addition to that?
Well, and I think they acknowledge this, but I mean, they have to identify the modifications they're requesting and submit a document in writing requesting the modifications, setting forth the reasons that the modification should be granted such that, you know, people can review it. And they have to meet the, you know, for the grading ordinance, they have to meet the grading standard for modification for land development. They have to meet the land development standard for modifications. And so I think that that's the idea. They're going to have to submit that in writing so that it can be understood, which I think was what she was suggesting, is that they wanted time to do that and submit it for the next meeting.
Right, right. Which I mean, totally fine, you know, very, it's not uncommon for, for presenters to come back with additional information at a later meeting, but you know, just in case there was anything more particular than that.
Could we, could we ask about other parts of this plan? For example, I, I, I wasn't quite sure what this whole business about these two large lots at the end of the cul-de-sac were all about. We seem to get a separate submittal for those. Are those owned by the, somebody else or what's the situation there? This is part of parcel thirteen and part of parcel thirteen.
The separate submittal was the plan of lots just got submitted separately. So we had, you know, the site plan that showed the position of the lots. We need some of the requirements, a more formalized surveying document than is a plan of lots was, was sent as a follow-up. So, but it is.
Are those, are those lots part of lot, part of parcel thirteen or are they separate lots?
The intent is for that to be one estate lot. We, based on the comments in the letter, we had to discuss whether or not it makes sense to combine that with parcel thirteen at the end of the cul-de-sac, whether to provide an easement. So you know, that was one, again, one of the comments in the gateway letter to basically choose one or the other.
Are you, are you going to define that before your next submittal?
Yes.
Because right now it just looks like you have one enormous lot thirteen.
That's, that's essentially correct, though. That is the intent.
Are there any comments from other planning commission members?
No.
Brendan?
Seems to me that they're trying to fit a lot of development on a site that isn't suited for it. And there's just such a complete lack of information that I don't even know which way is up with this one, to figure out where I might stand.
Jonathan?
Yeah, what's the total number of lots on this plan?
There are twenty two lots along the main road plus one estate lot, so that's twenty three lots. And then six lots along Pine Creek. So when I say that, that's the developable lots, not including open space or stormwater management, et cetera.
Speaking of that, is, what is lot twenty three? Is that a, that's not a building lot, is it?
That needs to be adjusted, yeah.
It's not big enough. It's not wide enough, let's put it that way.
That's correct.
Yeah, I, I guess my, my, my comment is going back to Chris's comment that the ordinances doesn't avail enough building space for single dwellings. I, I would say maybe that's not quite accurate i- i- in that it doesn't avail itself to build twenty eight single family dwellings. That, but perhaps within the confines of the ordinances, that a number of suitable single filling dwellings could be developed. And as far as the justifications for the, the waivers or variances, seems to be only that's what other plans, other sizes, sizes of plans are in the area. You know, it's not a one size fits all category and the topography of the, of the parcel needs to be taken in consideration.
Kim, do you have some comments?
I think I've probably made all of my comments. I think it takes, needs serious consideration, any development site that needs this many variances. I think needs to be looked at very seriously.
RJ? Do we have public comment on this?
Yes, we, we do. I've got at this point, seven individuals that signed up prior to the meeting to speak. Again, just to remind everyone, if you had not previously signed up to speak either by emailing myself or the planning assistant, Sandra Bauer. You know, feel free to type in the chat now. If you're using a device that you can't for some reason access the chat box, you can email either of us, preferably me, probably. And, and let me know that you would still like to sign up, but I, I think most of the audience, I recognize the names. So I'm just going to go down the line of the folks that we have signed up for public comment. Mr. Furman, is that the correct procedure?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Let me pull up my list here. I believe the first one that we have is Dana Camerata. So I'm going to send Dana a microphone and a video request. And Dana is located, I hope I'm saying all of your names right, by the way. I, I'm going to do my best. Dana is located at five thirty Pine Creek Road. And Dana, I, I've sent you a microphone request, but you have not quite unmuted yet.
Hi, there we go. Sam, you'll need to turn that down. Okay, we have a little party here going on.
Yeah, if you, if you've got someone else in the room, just have them mute their sound or else you will get the.
One minute. Okay, now, can you hear me?
Got it.
Yes.
All right, um, my name is Dana Camerata. I live across the street from the development that has been planned. I have several concerns and issues to address. First of all, I would probably benefit by having a development across the street from me and the price of our home would probably go up in value. So I'm not coming from. would probably go up in value. So I'm not coming from it from a selfish point of view. One of the things, and I've been making copious notes here, the guide rail, and I'm just going to sort of go down my list here. I heard early in this meeting that the guide rail was going to be taken down. I am extremely concerned about that. I cannot tell you how many times my husband and I have called nine-one-one based upon the high traffic and the accidents that have happened on Pine Creek Road. One young lady, like, went straight through the guide rail at one time and DM'd her died and cut her car in half. I feel that that's super important. Sidewalks also, if you're going to do a development, should also be put in place. As far as stormwater, there's big issues on that, but one of the things to take in consideration, and I don't know if your engineers are aware, but my husband and I have two stormwater drains that take all the stormwater runoff from the hill. And it goes into a drain, which is underground and filtered right onto probably one of the first lots on Pine Creek Road. I'm curious how you're going to address that. Should I just make my statements or ask the questions and have them be answered? Because there's a couple of things here I wanted to address.
You know what, I will ask Ted what our previous practice was, if there was only here for one, COVID, and also, if there's time limits or anything.
Well, I don't think we have any time limit, but I do think that it makes sense to let her get through all of the questions, go through a whole thing, just because we're on Zoom, it'll be difficult otherwise. So I'd say let her go through everything she wants to ask, get it all out there. And then if the planning commission wants your response from the applicant, they can. And I think that's probably the best way to handle it at this point.
Okay, I just, I don't want to rattle off and drive you all nuts. Okay, so the guide rail is super important. It does save lives. I've witnessed it. You can check the police log to verify. The stormwater runoff is huge. Another thing that's really concerning with me is the landslides that was discussed earlier. I have two landslides in the front of my yard that the town mechanist has had to scoop up during the past couple of major rainfalls. So the land is really unstable in this valley. The other question I have is, there are three gas wells on that property. Not one of you guys have addressed that. I've been told that the main gas well could take care of all the light and heat for Wilkinsburg for the next twenty-five years. What's happening with that is one of my questions. The landslides, from a preservationist's point of view, I'm interested to know what you're going to do with the historic barn built in nineteen eighty-four, along with the two-story log cabin that is very valuable, in my opinion. Let me see here. The steepness of this property and the flooding is one of my most major concerns. It's being built in a wetland. I have witnessed numerous flooding. Pine Creek has been shut down, down by the rave cinema due to the flooding. The runoff on this now proposed two-to-one slope is very concerning. The amount of water that comes down, plus the clear cutting of the trees, I feel is going to just have an enormous impact, and it's going to be a huge detriment to the community. And the last thing that mechanist needs, in my opinion, is a bunch of homes all on top of each other on a shitty piece of land, excuse my French, that is just going to be overcrowded, cause more problems. I'm not confident a ten-year lease of an HOA is going to take care of that road and the stormwater management. I feel that we're going to do a disservice to our neighbors downstream, which would affect the Hampton, Millville, all the way down to the river. I could go on, but it's just, it seems like it's a bad development on this piece of property. Mr. Appleton tried to sell me that property for three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, twenty-some years ago, because no developer would buy it nor touch it. And I'm really curious, what has changed from then until now as to why this is a good development to put thirty-one homes on? And that's it?
Or should they attempt to answer some of these now?
It's totally up to if you want to go through all the comments, or if you want to have them address after each one. It's up to you, Mr. Curran.
Well, I think probably the biggest item there is the stormwater. Pine Creek does tend to flood, floods downstream, flooded at the rave theaters, it's flooded across at the Gardner Building. It's, it's, it's a very tough stream. So they're going to have to show, I think, that they can handle all of that water.
Well, yeah, again, we can have the applicant go through. I think she had about, I think there were about seven points she wanted them to address. You can, you can see if there's other questions and have them do them all at once, or do you want to take a-
Well, let's go through this first one.
Okay.
So, I can talk about a couple of those, and then Josh will have to finish off. But with respect to the guide rail, you know, we're proposing fill along Pine Creek grade. So the need for the guide rail would be alleviated because those lots would be flat with the road, whereas right now, it's a pretty sudden drop-off.
Well, but when the cars come around that sharp bend and they go into their front window while they're eating dinner, I think that's going to be an issue. These cars come around here and look at the accident reports.
I mean, we have had an initial meeting with PennDOT relative to that, and basically additional stop controls were not warranted at Minor Road. So we're not, you know, since it's a state road, we're not permitted to, to change that flow through unless the township wants to petition it. So there's unfortunately not much that the applicant can do to alleviate that concern without intervention of the town, of the town. With respect to the landslides, obviously, that, that is subject to, you know, previous discussions this evening. With respect to the gas wells, if you can just, those are located on the largest estate lot next to an existing pond that's there, which is outside of the proposed graded area. So I believe that there are no impacts to those.
What will you do with the gas well?
I'll have to let Josh answer that. I'm not sure what the status of the gas rates is.
The previous owner retained the gas rights under the property. So we have no plans for the gas wells.
No plans to remove them. So they would basically be kept in place.
So they'd be capped and just left on someone's property and they would buy it with a gas well on it?
No, no, they wouldn't be capped. They would be active still. So it would be some, purchase of that property would be subject to those previous gas wells. Just not unusual.
What's the disposition of the barn and cabin?
The barn and, and, the barn and the home are not historic, historical properties. They will be demolished prior to the development taking place.
Is there anything else?
Okay, stormwater, obviously, that, that is, again, subject to a report that has been provided, albeit with some requests for additional information. So that, as we recognize, is of utmost concern for the area and the town in general, and that will be addressed.
Okay. RJ, do you have another person who wants to comment?
I do. Thank you very much for commenting, Dana. Just because I, I know a couple of you registered ahead of time and said that you all were in the same location. Should I be queuing you up for anyone else or, or different laptops or devices?
Get somebody else and I'll go get my husband. Unless, Sam, you want to come in this room?
I've, I've got, I've got a sign-up order here, so I just want to make sure.
Okay, well, just stay on mine, and then Sam will just join on mine.
Okay, all right. I'm, I'm gonna, I've got Sam as number eight, actually, here. So I will, I will come back to you all in six or seven comments. All right, thank you. The next one we've got up is Brandon Schweiger. Just give me a moment and I will find him in the comments, or I mean, in the participant section. Mr. Schweiger, I've sent you a mic and camera request.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Brandon Schweiger. I live on fifty-five Pine Creek Road. I actually live at the end of Pine Creek Road, down from Dana. My main concern is the stormwater, obviously. We get hammered big time with the water right now, and that creek can't handle the water it gets right now. So my question is, what is it that you are going to do to hold back that kind of water? Because we've been here for a little over two years and we've been flooded twelve times. And some of those times where we have only got a half inch of rain. So putting in all those new properties and buildings and all that asphalt and concrete that you're going to put in, you know, that's more runoff that's going to come down the stream, not only affecting us, but you have a new development going in on, where the old trader horn is. You know, that could severely affect that area as well. Having that amount of water, extra water come to us, I mean, we got fifty-one inches of water in our home. My wife and two-year-old son had to be rescued on a boat. So it's a pretty severe thing to, you know, have that amount of building, buildings there with that amount of water coming off of those. Because regardless of what you're going to do to hold back that water, eventually that water's going to come to us. Because if your retention ponds or whatever you put in place are going to start to overflow and affect your area up there, your main concern is going to empty that water, and that water's going to come right to us. So I just, I'm having a hard time understanding how you're going to hold back that kind of water when this creek can't hold the water it has now.
So I can, I guess, tackle that one. You know, the ordinance just requires essentially that we're not exacerbating any existing conditions. It's not necessarily the applicant's requirement to fix a pre-existing condition with the stream. However, that being said, you know, we have discussed with staff the possibility of dedicating some of the area, particularly on that estate lot that's in the flood plain, to create some additional flood control mitigation strategies. Again, that's outside of the scope of our project, but it's something that the applicant said, said that he's willing to consider doing for that purpose.
I mean, if, if this is approved, I mean, as far, as far as the township goes, I mean, what are, what are our strategies to, I mean, there's a lot of land in between that form and, say, you know, the back part of my property. What, what about, what would be put in place to help that, support that? Because there's other families on Pine Creek Road whose yards get destroyed and, you know, in a moment's notice. I mean, the creek banks are eroding, severely eroding. I mean, when we first moved here, we put a metal stake against the creek edge, and it took away almost three feet of that bank in a short time. That's two years. It took away three feet of that bank. So the more water that comes down there, the more erosion that's going to, you know, start.
Like I said, we can only operate within the bounds of the ordinance and then offer up some additional property for additional strategies that the town would have to analyze on a global scale.
Help me.
Okay. RJ, is there, is there another person on?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Schweiger. I'm going to turn your mic off now. All right. Next up is Joanne. And for the record, Joanne is at four thirty-five Pine Creek Road. And I apologize, I don't recall if I said it, for Mr. Schweiger, he was at fifty-five Pine Creek Road, I believe. Okay, Joanne, you're up.
Okay, thank you, RJ. Nice to meet everyone at the council. And I, I have to say, this is my first time I've ever done this, to be part of viewing what happens at the council. And I very much appreciate the thoroughness. I have to say that I've learned a lot. And, but my concerns mostly at this point right now are pretty much what everybody has said already. My husband and I, our property slopes off of Pine Creek. We're directly on Pine Creek. And we also, our property touches Minor. We go on the other side of the creek, and we would border the proposed development. We have photographs. I sent them to RJ. I don't know if you're able to share that, RJ, of the, I'm sorry?
Oh, I just said, yeah, sure. Let me keep talking and I'll screen share on my other laptop.
Yeah, I mean, there, a massive amount of water comes off of that hillside, way up beyond the tree line. I mean, it's probably three-quarters of the way from Minor over to the barn. So we're talking a huge grassy area flooding down when there's a decent rainfall. It's like a waterfall, the entire hillside. And so the concern is, as with everyone else, where, I mean, this water partially now seeps into the ground, because that's what the ground's designed to do, right? So now you're proposing, you know, making a, an impermeable solid surface that all this water is now going to run off and go instead of into the ground a little bit. There's a, I don't know if you can see that, it has to kind of maybe made really bigger.
Yeah, sorry, they, they came in a little smaller.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, you can barely see. Is there another one, RJ, that shows it? I think there's one that's bigger that-
They're, they're all, they're all pretty tiny, but-
Yeah, but this is, this is showing our deck. If we could get rid of the deck, we just want to see the ground back. So I think I have another picture with the ground.
There's, there's about five of them. I just, sorry, again, unfortunately, this is a double-device situation. I'll just, I'll scroll through them as, as you're talking.
Yeah, because the one picture in particular really shows the amount of runoff. And like I said, that's with it seeping into the ground already, a grassy area, not lawns. Okay, and now we're talking about putting, you know, the roadway, the homes, the whole bit, all the impermeable surfaces. And that water isn't going to seep into the ground. It's all now going to go directly into Pine Creek through the storm sewers or whatever. And this is just going to affect everybody downstream. And I really take issue with a number of things that this development company, Adamec, has the statements they've made. You know, the spirit of mechanist is not about development. Like RJ said, the spirit of mechanist, us who live here, my husband and I have been here forty years, the spirit is to preserve what we have. And what we have is a beautiful community of trees and space and living area that we can enjoy as families. We're not about putting a bunch of little houses, squeezing them into a land that's wetlands, by the way. Okay, where were we, why were even having the discussion? I don't know. I honestly don't know. But we are. Okay, so we've got wetlands and, and, you know, this whole idea that, well, you've done this in other developments and you've done this and we need modifications. Well, you know what? You're taking all these and trying to pack these modifications, these variances that you want to the ordinances, into one location. And it's like you're trying to fit a square into a circle, and it just doesn't fit. And I hope, I hope, without going on here, that our council is thorough enough and cares about this community enough to see through that and do the right thing for us. And that's pretty much all I have to say. So I thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you very much, Joanne.
Hey.
RJ?
Yes, I've, I've got, thank you, Joanne. I'm going to take you off. Mic and camera now. Next up is Dawn Miller. This is number four out of eight. Okay, I'm going to send camera and mic requests to Dawn now. There you are.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so again, I, you know, everything my neighbors are saying is true. But I want to go through the speech that I prepared because I think it's important to hear this. If this plan is approved, much of the existing meadow, wetlands, trees, and all, all of which normally help absorb the storm water will be replaced with 29 roofs, 29 driveways, some sidewalks in certain locations potentially on Abbott Road. I wasn't sure if there were going to be sidewalks or not there, and a new road. These surfaces are going to be impervious surfaces. Impervious surfaces like this will not allow the rain or the snow melt to soak into the ground. And as the water runs off the streets and lawns, it carries with it fertilizer, dirt, pesticides, oil, grease, and other pollutants into the creek. Part of the reason we have a flooding problem in the creek is because we already have a lot of silt and sediment in that creek. If you build 29 homes on a slope like this and you remove a lot of the vegetation to do so, you're creating a runway of water that is is going to feed into something that is already an undesirable position. And the architect made the comment that, you know, they had just have to follow the orderances and it's not their job to fix an existing problem. Well, no, it's not, but the addition of 29 new homes on this site will exacerbate an existing problem. Lots 26 to 31, based on what I could see of the drawings are in the floodway. Lots 26 through 31 are also in designated wetlands. Lots 14 through 23 are also in designated wetlands. To second what my neighbor Joey and Campbell says, I don't even know why we're having any of this conversation. I didn't think you could get away with building in wetlands like that. We need low-impact development if we have any more development at all on Pine Creek Road. If this plan is approved, I ask that council take every possible step that they can to mitigate the stormwater damage. Require them, if you can, to use impervious surfaces. You know, I don't understand why we're putting, I understand they need to maximize their investment. But you have, let me find the number because I don't want to misquote it. How many? There are 18 existing homes between 485 Pine Creek Road and Route 19 where Brandon and Nicole Schweiger live. 18 existing homes. Many of us have been here for many, many years. We have invested in this community. We pay our taxes. Please don't approve a plan to put in 29 new homes that helps someone who's not even going to live here maximize their investment only to blow out the investment of everybody that lives downstream and will probably affect people that live upstream as well. And just, this is a very little comment, but I understand that Pine Creek is not the road itself is not the kind of road that you expect to have walkers on, but we have people that walk this road and they walk this road daily, presumably because it's their only means of transportation. So while I understand that they're currently on a lot of sidewalks on Pine Creek Road, people do walk it and potentially this development should include sidewalks. That's all I have. Oh, wait, no, wait a second. I'm so sorry. I have a PowerPoint that shows pictures of flooding at the farm at my location at 235 Pine Creek Road. I have pictures of flooding at Brandon and Nicole's house down at 55 Pine Creek Road that I'm happy to share my screen and show everybody if you want to see them.
Let's, in regards to the PowerPoint, you came very prepared. How about this? How about you email it to me and I'll distribute it to the planning commission members and the council liaison? Just to keep things moving.
That sounds fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. RJ?
Hey. Switching you out, I believe that this next commenter is one of the folks that is going to be getting on with with Dana. I'm sure if I'm wrong, I'll figure that out quickly. But for now, I've sent Dana a mic and camera request.
Okay, hang on.
I've got Jeff is up next. Is he one of the folks with you? Okay, so you're Jeff, right?
Yes, I am.
All right, I got it right. And you live at 455 Pine Creek Road?
Yes.
All right, take it away, sir.
All right, well, I'm in the direct bullseye of the development because I'll be bordered on it by both sides. And, you know, over a lot of years that I've lived, I've lived there for 25 years, total on that road for 40. My parents live right down the street. The flooding has been, like everybody else has said, it's gotten out of control over the last more or less five years, maybe a little bit longer, but I've lost probably a total of 30 feet of stream bank within the last five years. I mean, I have photos of it. Everybody has photos of it. You can come and see it if you want. My main concern is my lot, my house, is literally going to be right next to a cliff that they want to fill. But yeah, basically a cliff. This two-to-one slope, which is going to increase the water runoff, like everybody's commented and said, there's no way, and I apologize to any engineer out there, there's, you can't control that water that comes down that stream. There's no way. You can't tell me, convince me any way, shape, or form that that is not going to impact any one of these homes downstream from myself and let alone even farther down. And let alone what the value of my property is going to be looking at a cliff. You know, they're going to be looking pretty much into my second bedroom floor, you know, my bedroom window if they fill this level to the road. Which to me is, like everybody said, I don't even know why we're having this this discussion because it doesn't make any sense to me. There's room for one house on there and it's sitting there now, you know, it's a big barn, it's a pretty place. You're putting, trying to put a lot of stuff into a little place and it's not practical. Trying to get away with it, trying to maximize variances, everything like that. It doesn't make any sense. So that's about all I got. Everybody else has made some great comments and as I think the council that's listening to everybody here is going to make their the right decision. And let it be the way it's supposed to be, the way it is. So thanks.
Thank you. RJ?
Thank you very much, Jeff, and we will be coming back to Dana's camera later on. But for now, the next person we've got up is Brian Danley. So I'm going to send him a mic and camera request.
Can you hear me, RJ?
Yeah, I was ready for you to show up beside the creek, but you're inside.
I am. Yeah, no, I'll keep this kind of brief, but I, you know, like a few other people said, I appreciate the planning commission's concerns and comments. It's obvious that, you know, you guys are have some hesitations with what you've been presented with today. You know, we heard how many variances they're asking for. Those variances, I've talked about this before, but those only benefit the builder. They don't benefit the rest of the community. Especially in this instance. You know, it quite frankly, doesn't even sound like they read to some degree mechanless's ordinances and it's obvious that, you know, we're not in there. Our best interest is not in their interest. It's typical of a lot of these developers. They come in, you know, put too many houses and too small of a space and then cut and run and then the rest of us that are going to be here, you know, for the next, you know, the rest of our life, we're going to be the one with the mess that they create. You know, quite frankly, the only way that they should be allowed to build anything there is if they're going to be part of the solution and not you know, continue to be part of the problem with with the stormwater. You know, obviously, that's, you know, my my biggest concern is being part of the KLS families for better stormwater management. I mean, that's, that's really all I have to say, I guess, at this point. I mean, everybody else kind of already, you know, made my points. It's, it's again, I just want to reiterate, I mean, these variances, it's that's only to help the developer. It's obvious, I think Kim said this at one point, I mean, they're trying to fit too many homes and too small of a piece of property. I mean, that's, that's obvious based on these variances and, you know. And a few people said, I didn't even realize that you were allowed to build in a floodplain anymore. So, yeah, I, again, I appreciate the planning commission's you know, obvious consideration, thoughtful comments and questioning and, and, you know, your hesitation to go forward with this. So thanks.
Thank you.
Great.
RJ?
You, Mr. Danley, I'm going to take you off camera now. I just want to make a mention, and this is going to sound like a very pedantic detail, so I apologize. But I want to make sure we're clear that what we're requesting at this stage are modifications, not variances. Variances would have to go before zoning hearing board. Modifications are alterations to certain design standards of the subdivision and land development code or the grading ordinance. And they are, you know, recommended up or down by the planning commission and then heard by town council. So sounds like a technicality, but I just want to make sure we're clear for the record that we're talking about modifications, not variances in this instance. All right, that said, keep it moving. Next, I've got Kendall Morrow. Kendall, let me find you here in our participants. I have sent you a microphone and camera request.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I'm probably one of the only young people going to be speaking. My name's Kendall Morrow and I live at 10158 Sudbury Drive, so above the supposed development. And I kind of put together this like short speech that I had just to put like a different perspective down. As I agree with like everything that, like, our neighbors have been saying and people who live and have been opposed to this development. So I'd like to say that this development will be threatening to the wetlands located on the property in the forest. You know, if we all have the mentality that only taking a small portion of the forest won't be a problem. In the larger picture, of course, it will be devastating to our environment and our future as I am a young person. And so by removing any portion of the forest, this project will simply add to the problem. It's not going to do anything, obviously, to fix and stop flooding. So the township could be a place where we make efforts to protect and preserve our green spaces, not push to pack more homes in a valuable, in a vulnerable area and cause harm to both the environment and current residents located around this targeted area. As to mention all the various dangers presented when disrupting the land, major flooding will be even more of a concern than before if this development is approved. So I just wanted to say that, like, just to please take that into consideration. And of course, although this isn't a large development in the grand scheme of like our state or the world or whatever, you know, just to look at it like thinking about, I guess, our, like, all of, because I obviously don't have children and grandchildren, but if you guys have children or grandchildren, nieces or nephews, just to like, keep in mind that this isn't going to be helping the future. And as we know, there are climate, like, there's a climate crisis and climate change, so we just have to be careful with, like, taking out trees that are active sponges to suck up carbon and it will only, basically, it will only exacerbate flooding and all of these problems that we're presented with in our current world. So I just wanted to say that. And although I'm only 15, I thought that I couldn't go without saying anything because this has been really bothering me. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Kendall.
As a young person in local government, stay involved and stick with it.
Thank you.
All right. Have we got next? Let's see, Sam Camerata. And I believe that is
I told her that you're doing it here. He's coming back. Hold on.
And Dana, while I've got you here, we also had Michael Camerata sign up to speak. Yes, we can, we can hear you.
I need to add the video. Technical difficulties. Bear with us one second.
Hey, I have a real quick question for you, Dana. Michael Camerata also signed up with a message to Sandy. Is he also going to speak from your camera?
No, he owns his own home, thank goodness.
Okay, I don't know, you might, might have a family event, you know.
No, I have a party going on.
Okay. I think that he he sent a comment to her that we will, you will read or either send him a mic from request after this, but, okay, thank you. Sam, you're up. Are you also at 530 Pine Creek Road?
At 530 Pine Creek Road.
Okay.
I have a couple of things that I'd like to address if I could get an answer possibly. When I was looking at the prints, it showed that the sewer, storm sewer and holding pond were going to be private. Now, obviously, I'm an ex plumber retired. Sewers is, that's impossible to be private unless you're running a long distance and the township wants you to be responsible. So I understand that's not part of it, but the stormwater and the holding pond being private, what is going to keep the HOA that they create to maintain it? And wasn't it a couple of years ago that the township said, no longer are they going to do that? That they want to have possession of all holding ponds that had to meet requirements? And they were to take care of them? So my question to the builder or developer is, how can you make that private when the township has already an ordinance saying it can't be private? The holding pond especially.
Tyson, do you want to speak up here?
I think that's more of a question for RJ. It's our understanding that pond does not need to be dedicated to the town.
Yeah.
I can chime in.
And do a little bit of research on it, but as far as I recall, at this moment, you are able to either have a private or a public stormwater maintenance infrastructure detention pond, but there are, there are certain stipulations for maintenance or for escrow if it is something that's to be dedicated as a public facility. That's typically something that would ultimately be hammered out in the developer's agreement and part of the approval process. So, you know, again, I disclaimer, I've only been here for about, you know, going on approaching a year now in February. So I may not have been present for some of the conversations about public versus private, how stormwater ponds are maintained going forward, but that's certainly a conversation I can bring to the town manager. You know, to confirm what conversations have gone on before and what direction we want to go with this particular pond if this development is successful.
I think my concern, RJ, and I appreciate your response on that, is I've been exposed to some of these private ponds that after X number of years and people kind of forget about them, I've actually seen them being filled in, filled in and non-existent anymore. I, there's one example is on Minor Road. Somebody want to take a ride up there and see where there was a holding pond that no longer exists. It's now somebody's front yard. So I'm kind of experienced with the HOAs as far as their maintenance and I'm very concerned over that. If the township will allow anything it would hold, especially in this area, would hold a community that's in the development responsible to maintain that when I know dang well that there would be a big argument, what if two or three people decide they don't want to pay for it? How are they going to operate that? The township will have to step in. So that's one issue that I'd like to see addressed. It's kind of important.
If I may, sir, there are separate statutes that are applicable to planned communities. And so the declarations and the covenants and the bylaws all speak to maintenance obligations in that type of instance. The Um, the, uh, association dues are what go to a single pot of funds and that's what you use to maintain the property such as a retention pond like you're mentioning. Um, and in fact, actually, the statutes are so strict. That if a homeowner that's part of such a community does not pay the dues to, to maintain, that, uh, the association can actually put a lien against their home. So the, the, the laws are, your, your concern is extremely, um, relevant and, and, and correct. But that, that's why there are very, very strict statutes, um, in place to, to make sure that everybody pays.
I can appreciate that, Christina, very much so. And I understand when they put them in place, how they strictly. Put rules down, but I also see people making the payments on their monthly dues. And not having enough money to do the maintenance necessary. For example, you guys are gonna have this community responsible for the roads. The ponds, any type of runoff on the storms, on the storm drains. I just don't see that happening. I don't see that happening. Ten years from now, when the things need to start to be done, they're not having the pot of money to take care of it. And what do they do? They just say, oh, well, I'm sorry, I just can't get to it. Is now responsible because they're having worse flooding issues. Cuz now all this water is dumping directly into the creek. So, please, I would ask the council to please consider that. Uh, I'd like to get, uh, somebody to answer that for me. Um, possibly send me a text, email, whatever it may be. Okay, uh, that's the one I addressed. This, the next one I wanted to address was, again, being a plumber. It's very interesting. I'm part of the plan I saw. That roof water from the homes are gonna be piped to the storm drains and/or the street. I'd love to be able to do that everywhere. Uh, I was always under the understanding you had to put a sump in. Okay, you weren't allowed to tie into storm drains. Again, I have an issue with that. Uh, I'd like to get an answer. If you look at the plan, it does show piping being done from each home, roof water, surface water. Whatever the case may be, piped over to a destination. So that's the second thing that I would like to address. Somebody please look that over. And again, could I get a response? The last thing I probably would. Like to go over, which I'm very proud of my neighbors for all their addressing of the storm water and how this creek has been flooding. Um, I've been here since nineteen ninety. I've seen this valley filled to the point where it's a lake. Um, adding more houses to this project is absolutely a crazy idea. There's three, four lots that I saw on the plan that were actually. Um, intruding in on the wetlands being filled. Hello, I don't know if that's a possibility. I will be called. On the D, them filling any type of wetlands. So if you look at the lots, and I think it's, I think it's like twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. They are definitely in the wetlands pretty heavily. Uh, there is a print that shows the wetlands. I would like you to review all wetlands on each piece of property. And see what the fill, their fill tactic is gonna be with this variances as they would like. So, um. That's pretty much, I think that's pretty much, and I, I like to hear a response on that cuz it's, I'm more curious of that one. Uh, I will be contacting the DER because. My understanding is that wetlands are not to be touched. That's why Vestal Field is not able to be developed. Cuz that's wetlands. I might be wrong, but that's what I was told, so.
I can comment on that. And Mr. Dizroth mentioned that earlier, that this project is subject to other. Uh, permits from the conservation district and the D P and or Army Corps. So that is, uh, the purview of those entities. We are aware of that issue. Uh, obviously, those wetlands have been previously disturbed by the, you know, the agricultural.
Farming a piece of property is different than building on it and filling it in. That was a whole different story. And when he did develop it, if you remember, and you had your machine stuck in that mud. That, that is a case where that's the wetlands, okay? You start filling in the wetlands. Are you gonna remove the dirt before you start filling it in? Or are you just gonna pile the dirt up on the wetland? See, and that's why I'm saying I will be contacted DER. I'm very curious to that. I would like to get an answer from them.
So there is, again, there is a process by which we have to make that application and, and your. Uh, the way that this approval was set up is that the final approval wouldn't be granted until that permit is in hand. And quite honestly, that permit does take quite a while to get. Uh, but. The purposes of coming in before the planning commission this evening was, uh, again, to, to seek these. Modifications, it minimizes the impact to, um. Uh, to those wetlands, to the floodplain. Furthermore, you know, the modification for the cartway actually reduces, uh, impervious area. So, I mean, there are. Some tangible benefits to those modifications as it reflects, uh, on some of the comments made, but. Again, specifically regarding the wetlands, we are aware of that and that's, that's, that's a process that we will have to work through.
Well, I, I, not to interrupt you on this, but I think prior to you even coming to us to, to get an approval on a plan. That you would have that approval. Doing is you're asking for an approval on variances and then going to the DEA and saying, well, the township's gonna let me do this.
Well, it's because if we don't get the modifications, the impacts are completely different. So, we, we want to start that process with the D P knowing what our exact amount of impact is going to be.
Okay, so just so we, this building commissioner we're looking at tonight is gonna look at this kind of thing. One, one of the other things that I wanted to comment on, I live directly across the street and I watched the drilling process going on for the geotech. Um, I didn't see them drilling many holes in the field. Uh, it was mainly up on the hillside. That's a wetland down there. Again, how deep do you have to go down to get to solid ground to start to fill? Because if you go to two to one, that's, that's asking for a slide. If that ground, that wetland ground is soft. That's, that hill is just gonna give away. The one that you're filling. Three to ones even bad when you have that type of wetland in, involved. You're not, now I'm not talking about the floodplain. I'm talking about wetlands. There's a whole different story there. The floodplain is ridiculous to even try to go into, and I see you didn't because obviously you'd be shut down. The wetlands is my concern. Is there any monoholes that you drilled down there? Can you give anybody a geotech, uh, uh, illustration of what was done?
Yes, I'm just trying to look that up right now, actually. But yes, that was included as part of the geotechnical report.
In your plan? That you submitted? Cuz I didn't see it.
Well, the, the, the reports are typically sent to the township staff and engineer. Uh, I don't know if they're shared with the planning commission or not, but we usually present a couple of things. But I can tell you that there. Were at least four borings, uh, placed in, uh.
Yeah, by the barn.
No, there's one right on the barn. It's actually one right next to the barn. There's, there's two.
Correct.
There's four, uh, that were, uh, on the hillside and then there were four, uh, in the field.
Yes, the upper part of the field, close to where you're gonna put the road in. I watched them, Tyson.
I'm saying down, parallel to the stream, there were four borings. On our report, be boring, one, two, three and four. And in response to your question about the depth.
Did they use a post hole digger? I mean, because there was never a machine down there.
It was an auger, uh, twenty foot deep, this one. This one. Yep, this one also twenty-five feet.
Was it in the wetlands?
Yes.
Okay. I'd love to see that.
So, um, you know, we'll be happy to provide that to you directly if you so wish, or you can get it from, from, uh, from, uh. Miss Susko or the, the town, however, is easiest to, uh.
Do you have that, RJ?
Tech report, those are typically parts of the submittal that are just internally reviewed by staff, but they are, uh. Mr. Furman, correct me if I'm wrong here, requestable under right to know?
Certainly as part of the development, Mr., uh, Camerata would have a right to see it, and I don't think there's any. Very clearly, the applicant does, is, I'm not objecting to that, but absolutely, you can see it.
I would appreciate that. I'd like to stop down and get that.
Yeah, um, we, for. But I'll, I'll have to take a look at the document and see if, you know, if you just want an e-copy. We don't have to charge for e-copies. Um, but we, how about you give us a call tomorrow and we can talk more about, about the best way to get you a copy of that?
Okay. Okay, and the question being is, is there any ruling with the township on filling in wetlands and what type of surface? It has to be keyed into. In other words, what base do you start at? If you see that it's softer ground, do you have to remove that first before you start to fill?
Sure, this is Dan Dizroth, the township engineer. That we, I've questioned in my review comments to the developer, all of the issues that you're referring to.
Thank you.
So we, we would, we would make sure that their report some more supports a keyway. Which would have to be constructed to support any fill. So, we're, we're all over it. I, you, you're completely on with your comments. I understand them and, and we've asked for the same things.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, just kind of addressing things off the top of my head because this is pretty emotional for me to see this land being developed. Uh, not because it's gonna affect my property, cuz it doesn't. I'm upstream, uh, high above this creek. It's just the fact that I can see what's gonna do to that hillside where the trees are. You're gonna have runoff water. I don't care how you try to control it. Once you start, once you start changing slopes, you go from a three to one to a two to one, which means that. Water's gonna run off that hillside faster. Which is gonna expose that creek to a lot more, lot more water. I see they have some swales built. But I know how those swales, and if it's private, how those swales won't be maintained. So, thank you, um. Hopefully I addressed some of the questions and, um, I would like the, this board to obviously, uh. Be able to contact the people that have called in tonight to, um, possibly. Be notified when the next meeting might be or what the decisions possibly would be in, in that manner.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Camerata.
Thank you.
Real quick on the follow-up, um, and thank you, Mr. Camerata. I believe we've got one more comment there, but on the topic of. Contact information and future meeting notice, um, all of the planning commission agendas are posted publicly. Usually within a couple of business days prior to the meetings. Um, normally scheduled meetings are the first Tuesday of every month. We moved this one, um. Habitually because, you know, the, the first Tuesday of November is often an election. Um, but though the agendas are available on the town website. Um, for anyone that emailed me or Sandy, I do have your, you know, email or potentially phone number if anyone wants to reach out, but. Um, you know, I'll leave it up to the members if they have any particular contact requests there.
Okay, it's, it's important because I know there's been times where it's hard to find out what the next meeting is gonna be. Um, until the day before generally, of what the proposal is gonna be. Sometimes, you know. They, they don't give a person a lot of time to be able to, be able to comment like we are tonight.
Sure, um, Mr. Furman, is there any particular process where I know, for example, in the zoning hearing board, you can. Register interested party status? Is there anything equivalent for a planning commission proceeding?
I don't think we have anything official, but I do, I mean, I would, you know, tonight, I believe whatever, they will announce the next, uh. Planning commission date, that'll be the next step in the process, it seems.
Okay. Now, we have this type of meeting again, is, is, uh, the developer need to come back to this committee, to your, to your board to, uh. Makes, make different proposals and, and answer some of the questions?
Well, the end of, I'm sorry.
We're all ready to answer. Great, go, go ahead. How about, Mr. Furman, you take this one?
Okay, well, uh, you know, the end of, uh, the presentation, the time will come after public comment and the board will render. Uh, you know, there's options that it can do. One of the things it can do is to table it to consider it at the next meeting. That, that, and, you know, they could certainly vote to do that and that'll happen shortly or they.
That's, we'll know here shortly. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, RJ?
Uh, yeah, well, so I'm, I'm gonna, um, ask Sandy to elaborate on, I believe she received. A, a message with a comment in it.
Yes, I did, everybody. This is Sandra Bauer on the planning assistant. I received a private, well, the first message was public, but then I responded to him privately, um, and he asked me to read a. Comment from him, several comments, um, that were typed into the chat box this evening, um, as. Um, different people were speaking and as the presentation was being made. So the first con, then the gentleman's name is, um, Sam Camerata. And his address is, and they have this. He currently lives at eighty-three oh eight Post Road. Um, but i- and that's in Allison Park, but he grew up at five thirty Pine Creek Road. So he is a resident, a current resident and, uh, a resident that used to live in the area.
Sandy, real quick, was this Sam or Michael?
This is Michael. Did I say Sam the first time?
You did. Sam was who we just had, so it was Michael.
I'm so glad you said that. I read the wrong, there's, I have so many messages in front of me. I apologize so much that I am speaking about Michael. Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, the comment was rain runoff should be a requirement in the scope of the project. The rain runoff is a huge deal in that flood zone. The addition of these homes would not alleviate this, but would exacerbate it. The minor Pine Creek intersection has also encountered numerous accidents. Um, and then the next comment he made was, um. He asked me to comment on his behalf and he then said also, this is a huge deer-ridden area that will be eliminated. Something that is also very concerning because they are already very overpopulated in the township, eliminating, uh. Eliminating that, something with auto correct. I have no idea, but, um, they are very overpopulated in the township. Um, let me see if there was anything else. Um. That looks like it was it. That's everything from Mr. Camerata, from Mr. Michael Camerata.
And, um, we, we just got one more message in the chat that I'm assuming, um, was. Intended as a public comment. Um, let me see if, if Amy Phelps is still. On the camera, or maybe they, maybe they logged off. Cuz it is getting pretty late here. Uh, so I'm just gonna read it and Amy, if you're still here and want to be on camera, type in the chat now. Um, this, this was received by user, uh, by Amy Phelps at ten one six six Sudbury Drive. Uh, they stated, I'd like to thank the members of, of council. Movement Planning Commission, um, for your time and sincere consideration in reviewing this plan and the requested modifications. Appreciate your service to our beloved community and I'm confident that you will do due diligence to protect and preserve our standards. I appreciate your comments and concerns this evening. Um. I think that might be it.
Okay, are there any, uh, comments, additional comments from the planning commission? Dan?
Uh, no additional comments. No, not at this time. We've heard, we've heard a lot.
No, sir, not, not right now.
Brendan?
Not at this time.
Okay. I assume then that what we'll do is table this tonight. Is there any, uh, time constraints involved with this, uh, RJ?
Uh, so, uh, as of tonight, the planning commission officially accepted the application. Typically, it needs to make its way to town council for some sort of action. Um, within ninety days, you know, regardless of the planning commission giving an up or down. Um, the developer can, you know, grant an extension and writing, but that's sort of the default timeline.
So it's ninety days from tonight, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we can, uh, table this for a month, let them get some of their, um. Some of the proposals worked out and, and we'll go back to this, I guess, next month. Uh, can I have a motion to table?
I motion to table this.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
Okay.
And Miss Susko, could you, the, the next planning, just for the members of the public, the next planning commission date where this will be considered will be.
If the developer is ready with a new. If the developer is ready with a new submittal, uh, in time for a re-review, it would be December first. Um, pretty tight turnaround. We, you know, depending on what we get back, uh, and, and Gateways Review Timeline, we may be into January. Um, if that is the case, it would be January fifth. And, um, just, this is mentioned on the agenda as sort of a note, but I just want to say it here too. We are switching to seven PM for our start time in twenty twenty-one. Um, if you look at the clock now, I think everyone can probably guess why. Um, so, so please be aware that assuming we have a December meeting, it will be seven thirty. Starting January, it's seven o'clock.
Okay. All right, uh, next item on the agenda is approval of the October sixth meet, uh, meeting minutes. Did we receive this?
Sandy.
I, I mean, I, we might have, I don't know.
I, I, I think you did because I'm, I'm pretty sure that I gave some comments on them.
Yeah, I think we did.
I, I actually read them.
They were.
An addendum to them.
They were commented upon and all revision, revisions were made, um, that, that needed to be made.
Okay. So can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Have a second?
Second.
Second by Jonathan? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Okay. Any other, uh, any other comments tonight? Any, anything else to go over? RJ?
Have anything else?
Can't hear you.
Sorry, sorry. I don't have anything else tonight.
Okay.
And Ms. Ryan, I think you just want to, uh, we want to be sure that if there's any members of the public that wish to have additional public comment, they get the opportunity before you adjourn tonight.
Is there anything else that you have, RJ?
I, I have not received, um, any, any other messages or signups or anything.
Okay. So I guess we could have a motion to adjourn. Is that correct?
Plus, we want to just keep going.
No, this is so much fun, you know?
Oh, my gosh, let's, let's put, uh, Kim on the spotlight camera and see how she feels about that.
Uh, I think, uh, I suspect it'll be unanimous, a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Jonathan, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
Night, RJ.
Thank you. Have a good evening.